The kids do sound pretty excited about it. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The La Troca Mobile Education Classroom is cosponsored with Para los Niños and the PepsiCo Foundation. Well, LA may have welcomed the Olympics to town twice before in 1984 and 1932, but this time it's getting a double whammy. Anna Marcos shows us how the Paralympics are also in the running.
LA will have more than a decade to prepare for its Olympic dream, and it's not just the 2028 Olympic Games it's hosting.
While LA has hosted two Olympic Games, we have never had the honor of hosting the Paralympic Games.
You can bet that I'll be there in the front row with my daughter cheering them on.
Yep, LA will be hosting two Olympics in 2028, the regular Olympics and the Paralympics, which cater to athletes with impaired muscular and movement ability or missing limbs. The Paralympic Games have grown in size and popularity over the years and usually run right after the Olympics. The UCLA campus will be among the hosts.
We're going to be the Olympic Village. We're going to be a training venue for many of the athletes, and we will support some of the competitions here.
This campus is a welcoming environment for all people, including some of the finest disabled athletes in the world. UCLA is fully ADA-compliant campus.
And LA city leaders plan to elevate the Paralympics into something never seen before.
All of us live life full of impediments, but the sport world teaches us that it is when we dig deep inside our souls and our spirits that we can accomplish anything, that we can be equals on the playing field, that it isn't always about whether we win or lose, it's how we compete.
It's a huge opportunity for us to have 10 years, 10 years and a half, to work with you guys and think out of the box. Come with your approaches.
We get a feeling we're in for a true Olympian experience and that the games themselves will take home the gold. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The first official Paralympic Games kicked off in Rome in 1960. Well, the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce has teamed up with Hollywood's biggest producers and movie moguls for the annual State of the Entertainment Industry event. As Anna Marcos shows us, there's a lot to cheer about.
Welcome to Hollywood, you have arrived.
Yes, you see the movie marquees, the celebrity tour buses with their gawking tourists, the stars on the Walk of Fame, and there's no doubt you're in tinsel town. And this movie capital of the world plans to stay that way, even after a few hard years due to runaway production. California's AB 1839, a law passed in 2015 that provides production tax credits, has led more TV and movie productions to come running back. That's one of the big stories at the yearly State of the Entertainment Industry Conference in Hollywood.
The stages are running at capacity and there's talk of constructing new stages, which is huge for our economy. Jobs, jobs, jobs. I always say it's all about jobs.
And in 2017, there was a 27% increase in locally honored television shows because so many good shows came back.
California Senate Leader Kevin DeLeón was a lead negotiator for the law.
We made it very clear that no one, and I mean no one, is going to outcompete the great state of California. And there's no place on earth that can replace Hollywood as a world's entertainment capital. Hollywood is here to stay.
But the movie industry is going through other changes as well.
Wonder Woman taught us that, no surprise, a woman can carry a superhero movie. It also taught us that, no surprise, a woman can direct a superhero movie.
One big change that's brought about a whole new economy is streaming content or entertainment on demand, as more and more audiences want to pay for what they want to watch, when they want to watch it, and how they want to watch it, often on their mobile device.
This, of course, is very big right now, of course, with the rise of the Netflix and Hulu's in the world that are challenging traditional, historic ways that viewers have viewed content.
One panel discussion noted the growing options for tailoring specific shows to specific viewers.
Something that you may want to watch at 6:00 AM might be related to exercise, and you might want something shown differently to you in terms of the set of choices at 6:00 AM than you might want at 7:00 PM on a Thursday evening.
It's an optimistic message one organizers want to share with the public, that a thriving entertainment industry helps not just film and TV productions, but all of us Angelenos and Californians as well. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The executive producer of Modern Family, Steve Levitin, received a Commitment to California Award at the event for his efforts to keep his productions in California. A section of South LA, once devoid of holiday decor, is now making festive lights a Christmas tradition, as Gil Reyes shows us the bright lights on Broadway return for a second season.
Holiday lights are back to brighten up several blocks of Broadway Boulevard in South Los Angeles, and this is the centerpiece.
This Christmas tree is, just brings so much unity within our neighborhood. When you drive down Broadway and see the spirit of Christmas, it encourages you, if you bring joy to your heart.
The nearly 40-foot tree now illuminates South LA's Century Palms neighborhood, an area represented by Councilman Marquise Harris Dawson.
The community inspired it. We have these great islands in the middle of Broadway Avenue. They just beg for holiday lights. So today we have a tree and lights for blocks and blocks north and south of here.
11-year-old Derek Davis hopes the displays inspire peace.
Maybe it could get somebody to meet other people, see if they like watching the tree, and then people come over here and they start talking, and then they become friends.
And we invite the entire city of Los Angeles to come celebrate this tree with us here on Broadway and Century.
In South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
At night, the holiday lights set Broadway aglow from 93rd to 111th Street. A city council takes steps to improve how it handles sexual harassment complaints. Have an emergency? Now you can text a message to 911. And another smart streetlight installation helps LA become the city of the future. All these stories in City B. Looking to develop a more centralized process to handle sexual harassment complaints by municipal employees, the LA City Council voted to explore the creation of a compliant hotline and website while also reexamining current policies. Councilwoman Nuri Martinez, who introduced the motion along with Councilman Paul Krikorian, said that for too long, women have had to deal with issues of an unpleasant comment, a look, a gesture, or something that has made them feel uncomfortable. After hearing members of the Personnel Department testify that harassment complaints can sometimes be handled within a department or by managers, and that the city does not fully track all complaints, Krikorian said he hoped the motion would lead to a more centralized process. As of December 1st, mobile users in the city of LA now have the ability to send text messages to 911, giving hearing and speech impaired residents or those in situations where it is too dangerous to dial 911 a potentially lifesaving option. With LA going live, nearly all mobile users throughout LA County will be covered by the technology. Call if you can, text if you can't is the slogan developed by the Federal Communications Commission as the new technology makes its debut. The city of LA and the LAPD will play an integral role in this new technology that has the potential to impact millions of Angelenos. Crews from the Los Angeles Department of Public Works Bureau of Street Lighting installed the second smart node in the city across from City Hall. The program involves the installation of streetlight poles that also include compartments for small cell communication equipment and antennas, cameras, electric vehicle charging, USB charging ports, power outlets, and speakers. Officials say the technology makes streets safer while improving the wireless network for smartphones in urban areas. They also say the smart node has the potential to do so much more.
We envision in the future, we will have sensors attached in some of those compartments, where you can have CO2 sensors, you can have temperature sensors, traffic count sensors, earthquake detection, maybe gunshot detection sensors. So sensors is the future.
A popular holiday story comes alive on stage. Go winter tubing during Snow Day LA and enjoy some of the most dazzling holiday displays right from your car. All this and this week's things to do. If Christmas is near, it's time for Too Many Tamaleys, based on a story by Gary Soto. It's a tender holiday story about children's mischief, traditions, and family love during a holiday gathering. Too Many Tamaleys tells the story of Maria, who is certain she's lost her mother's wedding ring after secretly trying it on while helping her prepare the dough for the tamaleys. Her only solution to the problem is to convince her cousin they must eat all the tamaleys in a desperate attempt to find the lost jewel in the dough. Puppets dance, songs, and tons of tamaleys burst through the walls of the theater whenever Too Many Tamaleys hits the stage, December 15th through the 18th, at La Plaza de la Raza. For more, visit bfatheater.org. Enjoy some winter tubing during Snow Day LA. Hop on a tube and fly through twinkling light archways, decorated trees, and falling snow. Enjoy food trucks, drinks, giant singing snowmen, and tubing lanes of varying lengths and thrill levels to satisfy every age group. So go ahead and take a ride on Saturday, December 16th, at the Old Lodge at 2002 Stadium Way. For more, visit snowdayla.com. Head on over to Candy Can Lane in Woodland Hills to watch dazzling holiday decorations twinkle and light up the night sky. Every year, families descend upon the enchanted Village of Lights to enjoy the magical displays on the four streets bordered by Oxnard, Martha, Corbin, and Winnetka. The lights can generally be enjoyed through New Year's Eve. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityb.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Very good, sir. Items one through nine are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on all items, sir.
Okay, then let's keep moving. Next section.
and circulated, and are now before council for consideration. Further, there's been a request to hold item 15 on the desk for an amending motion.
Let's do that, Mr. Ofero.
Mr. President, items 14 and 16 special, please.
Let's hold 14 and 16. Any other specials? Well, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Thank you. Okay, next section.
Mr. President, items 30 through 43 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on all items, sir.
Okay, then we'll move on.
That brings us to items 44 through 51. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I'd like to defer to Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. President. Items 44 through 51 are all settlements that have been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. If members have questions or concerns, we can consider them in closed session, but otherwise, those can be voted on now.
Okay, so would you read those items, Mr. Clerk?
Very good, sir. Item 44 in the case entitled Sierra Trading Incorporated and Dan and John Incorporated versus Kevin Procorporated and Catherine Miye Lee, there is a recommendation to expend $615,000 in settlement. For item 45 in the case entitled Wakisha Wilson versus City of Los Angeles at All, there is a recommendation to expend up to $298,000 in settlement. For item 46 in the case entitled Jose Manuel Dominguez versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $125,000 in settlement. For item 47 in the case entitled Pablo Gonzalez at All versus City of Los Angeles at All, there's a recommendation to satisfy judgment in the amount of $814,000 plus applicable interest and $23,416.09 for costs. For item 48 in the case entitled Tristan Barti at All versus Jack Jones Trucking at All, there is a recommendation to pay final judgment in the amount of $480,000 plus applicable interest and $51,173 for costs. For item 49 in the case entitled Joseph Maroni versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $200,000 in settlement. For item 50 in the case entitled Tammy Morrison versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $900,000 in settlement. And for item 51 in the case entitled Mitchell Miller versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement.
Okay, with that, there are no speakers on the queue. Let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Is Sean Murphy, Sean, are you here? Come on down. Sergeants, let him. Sean, you got items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 37, 38. And general public comment.
Yes, good morning. Item 1 is an item that I'm supporting. Item number 2 I am supporting. Item number 3, uh, there might be a maybe on this item. Item number 4 I am supporting. Item number 5 I am supporting. Item 31, uh, kind of not supporting it.
Sean, just look at me. It's okay. Look at me.
Item 31 I'm not supporting.
Thank you.
General public comment?
Yes, could we give him his one minute?
Sorry, Herv.
No, it's fine. You're doing well. Go ahead.
Uh, I want to wish all my fans Feliz Navidad, Xinsheng, Konstamitan. I'm celebrating an anniversary at my church this Christmas. I've been, or I'll get to the bottom of it. I've been an usher for 20 years at St. Charles Barmaio. At the 1 o'clock, I'm celebrating my anniversary, the first 20 years.
Well, 20 years is a long time. This gives Sean a round of applause.
1997 I started.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your service, Mr. Murphy.
If Tom LeBanche didn't give you the email, I'm telling you, I let LeBanche know. He might come.
Okay.
My invitation is open to the council, and I hope I get a crowd like this at, at the 1 o'clock Mass Christmas Day. Think about me on Christmas Day, will you?
Yes, I will.
And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna be singing two times Christmas Eve. It's gonna be a busy time for me.
Well, thank you for doing it. Thank you for all your service.
And my invitation is open to the city council, except a couple of knuckleheads. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Okay, uh, I'd like to move Mr. Clerk into the presentation portion of our agenda today. So I want to recognize Ms. Rodriguez, and we're also joined by our mayor Eric Garcetti, and I thought I saw our city attorney, Mike Fuer. Let's give them all a round of applause.
Hello.
How are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see you. I'm excited to do this.
Thank you. Very excited.
Good to see you.
How are you?
Nice to see you, too. So excited to do this. Nice to see you.
Monica, does, would anybody need a dog sitter? I see that we, I would gladly, or you can, you could, you can take her or him up there.
Okay.
Yeah, do that. Listen, we're very, very pet friendly here.
Oh, look at, oh.
The floor is yours, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we are gonna actually, let's start with a video clip really quickly.
We are here at the United Nations, being celebrated in 144 countries around the world and 22 universities.
You know, I think in most cultures today, women are up against many male-dominated cultures, right? And so, you know, breaking through that ceiling, breaking through that barrier, we certainly had it here in the U.S., you still have it in other countries, and, you know, while we've made strides, you know, we're still fighting the fight.
I believe that women are better business people than men, so how would that be with these young women who have education?
When women entrepreneurs take risks and succeed, societies change for the better. It becomes easier to accept the idea of a woman as the family's breadwinner, the head of a household, a community leader, or a head of state.
We need women to have more access to capital. We need women to have better leadership opportunities, and we need women to become entrepreneurs, because if they become entrepreneurs, the whole world is gonna change.
Nowadays, people should not depend on employment if it's not there. So women creating their own entrepreneurship and employment is a very important thing, and that's dear to me.
You've got Turtle Day, you've got Bubble Bath Day. These are real days in the world. So I thought, you know what, let's do Women's Entrepreneurship Day. Let's bring awareness to the fact that we need to empower, celebrate, and support women.
Women, more than any other human being, work so hard for their dreams that if you want to invest in the future of the world, you have to invest in women.
What an incredible introduction to talk and celebrate, to, to open us up as to why we're all here today. Women are a driving force in our city's growth and prosperity, and it is essential that we continue to promote their businesses and expand access to resources and capital. You know, I'm so proud that I had the opportunity to serve as a commissioner on the Board of Public Works under the leadership of Mayor Garcetti, because it was in that role that I recognized an incredible and unique opportunity we have here in the city of Los Angeles, and that we are an incredible economic engine. But making sure that we create that access and opportunity for more women businesses is part of our mandate, to make sure that we have contracting and open up our doors to the diversity that exists in the city, and that we should have contracting that is reflective of the city of Los Angeles's diversity. I am so proud today that in the United States, 38% of new businesses are founded by women, that women account for 85% of consumer purchases, and control $20 trillion in global spending. Women are the world's most responsible borrowers, in that they pay back microloans worldwide today at a rate of 97%. I would say we're a really great risk. Los Angeles has one of the most dynamic economies in the United States, and it's fitting that we declare November 19th Women's Entrepreneurship Day in the city of Los Angeles. And today's presentation is in partnership with Mayor Eric Garcetti, a gentleman who is no stranger to helping to open up opportunities for more women in this city. And I want to thank the ladies that are here joining me this, this morning, that have made it their mission to help open the doors and help share, shed a light on our opportunity to be more supportive of women entrepreneurship in the city of Los Angeles and around the world. And so at this time, I'd like to invite Mayor Eric Garcetti for his remarks.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Rodriguez, for your leadership, and you've done this long before you had the honorable before your name. It's something that I know is a core belief of yours and of this council. This has been a place where Los Angeles has set the bar, even as we recognize how far we still have to go to reach even higher. In fact, the first time I ever came to city council and city hall in any kind of public citizen capacity was to testify here on a task force called Task Force to Implement CDA, the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women. So my first kind of political getting my feet wet in this building was around the idea of gender equity. And I want to thank you, Council President Wesson, all my friends on the city council for welcoming me back here today, and with all the entrepreneurs who are behind me, who make this such a strong city and such a vibrant world. I think that we feel today that even more urgently than we did just a couple months ago. But when I became mayor, I tried to bring together with our city's first lady, my wife, Amy Elaine Wakeland, a lens on gender, to not just have it be a segregated part of our city operations, but a value across the board for all 37 departments that we have here. We had an executive directive that I put out on gender equity, requiring every single department to come together to share best practices, to measure things, and to look at it. And it's something that we do with my own office. And so if you'll indulge me for a second, I just want to say what the statistics are, because I think if we don't own up to our own statistics and change them, we can't demand that of others. In the mayor's office, and through the powers that I've had, eight of the 15 general managers that I've appointed have been women, a majority. Three of my six deputy mayors are women, 50%. 49% of my senior staff, and 100% of my chiefs of staff. We looked at the, the wage gap in the mayor's office, and we're not completely closed, but we're about as close as any office we could find at this level of government was. 98 cents the dollar for women and men in the office, two more cents to go. With your help, more than 50% of our city commissioners are women for the first time in our history. It's fluctuating between about 52 and 58% on any given month. And then we looked at things like, through the help with Mount St. Mary's, what are we doing with the contracts that come through city council and that come to my desk? In fact, we wanted to look at expanding opportunities for women-owned businesses, and we saw that when I became mayor, only $11.5 million of everything we procure was going through a WME, a women-owned enterprise. Today, just four years later, we've improved that to $43.3 million. If government, which is supposed to go slow, and which has bureaucracy, and, you know, is, at least from the private sector, always seen as kind of the slower laggards and things, can go that quickly, imagine what we can do in the private sector. Imagine what we can do in Hollywood, in the midst of the Weinstein, you know, controversy that's going on, where you look in Hollywood and 100, the top 100 most powerful women in Hollywood all report to a man. So we wonder why there's things like sexual harassment and assault going on in that industry. But it's not just in industries where there's a spotlight. As we've shown here, working with our friends at SEIU, we saw that in our own highrises, women who clean, the janitors, some of them undocumented are the victims of sexual assault and sexual harassment as well. So the work that we are doing here today is to make sure that we spread the idea of gender equity across everything that we do. And the way that we're looking at it today is highlighting the creative entrepreneurs, so often that are women in this city. The goal, in October, we launched, as many of you know, LA Original, which is highlighting products made in Los Angeles, led by Los Angeles companies. We created a logo promotional campaign. You can see it from our bus benches all the way to the airport. And 26 local companies and retailers, half of which are women-led, are making their products available with LA content in them. Electric bikes, furnitures, t-shirts, handbags. In fact, at Getty House, we just had a coming together where people could buy their holiday gifts, supporting groups like the Downtown Women's Center, which works with formerly homeless women to become makers. And we sold over $30,000 of, of Christmas and holiday gifts that will benefit some sort of social enterprise. And it's not too late. You can go to the Westfield Mall, where there's the pop-up of LA Original, or go to laoriginal.com. Even as you sit at your seats, not that I'd ever encourage you not to pay attention to 100% of what's going on in the council meetings, but if you haven't chopped, go to laoriginal.com. And so this global movement of Women's Entrepreneurship Day is about empowering women and girls to become active participants in the economy, to build a network of women leaders. I'm so proud to be mayor of this city. I'm so proud that Anangelina was leading the Small Business Administration, Maria Contreras Sweet just recently, and we won a competition with 300 cities around the nation to get startups started in a day. And now what we have done in our portal for our city's business site allows businesses to get started in a day, and we're sharing that with entrepreneurs around the country, and that was led by a woman as well. It's a global movement that's celebrated, as was mentioned, in 144 countries and 110 universities. So let me introduce the woman who had, is behind this great movement. The CEO and founder of Women's Entrepreneurship Day, the one, the only Wendy Diamond. Please welcome her with a Los Angeles welcome to this angel in the city of angels. Wendy.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you so much for having, and we're so honored, and thank you again. This movement was created originally because I ended up in Honduras on vacation, not realizing it was the murder capital of the world. And when I went to the murder capital of the world, I ended up in the jungle at this hotel, not realizing that I wasn't allowed to leave this hotel. So after three days of watching birds with all these people that were willing to risk their lives to watch words, birds, and they were bird watchers, the manager of the hotel said, "You would love to go meet this woman that runs an organization that gives microloans to poor women. And it's safe, two-hour drive, take it, you know, just have a fun time. She's really amazing." That journey changed my entire life by saying yes, and opened to the opportunity to take this, enlightened my whole mind towards women's entrepreneurship. I've been an entrepreneur my entire life. I've never worked for anyone. No one would hire me. Ah! And so, and, you know, my career is, you know, I'm a social entrepreneur. I created a company called Animal Fair when I realized there were 12 million animals euthanized a year. I brought celebrities in pop culture, the animal rescue world, 10 books, five TV shows, three Guinness World Records. After going to this community in Honduras, I spent, I was supposed to spend a couple hours, I spent three days with these women that lived on 50 cents a day, not even a dollar a day. And I realized, wow, what a $100 microloan can do to change a family. This $100 microloan, these women literally were able to open up their own businesses, and they would educate their children and provide for their families. I came back to New York, and I said, "Wow, I can take what I did in the animal world by simplifying the message on adoption and bring it to the women's world, to show the world why we need to educate the world and why it's so important to empower women in business." Because women, when they earn money, 90% of that money goes to educate their children and provide for their families, which uplifts the entire community. And, you know, as Councilwoman said, women are paying back these loans at a 97% rate. So I went around the world, and I found the most incredible people I knew. And we're talking, just this couple months ago, the, you know, Prime Minister of Lebanon proclaimed our day. Congresswoman Grace Ming recognized our movement in Congress this year. The president of Mexico State proclaimed our day, and New York State Governor Andrew Cuomo. So we are so honored that Mayor Garcetti and Councilwoman Rodriguez has taken on our movement, recognizing the importance that if you empower women in business... movement, recognizing the importance that if you empower women in business, you truly can alleviate poverty in this world and make this world a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. And I'd like to invite Jane Werwind for some remarks.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Garcetti. Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. It's a great honor to be here. And I know, as the mayor indicated earlier, that this is the moment to empower women entrepreneurs. There has never been a more significant time to step forward and say, we support all of our entrepreneurs, but with a special lens on women, minorities, and immigrants. I am an immigrant. I immigrated here in nineteen eighty-three to Los Angeles with my partner Raymond. I didn't realize there was a ten-point-four percent unemployment rate at that time, but it was a good thing because it pushed us to start our own business. We bootstrapped up our business on fourteen thousand dollars of self-funding. We never gave away equity. We never took any outside funding. No one would have given it to us anyway. And we were pursuing the American dream. We came here with a suitcase each. It became a California dream. It was an LA dream. Ours is an LA story. We started our skincare company, Dermalogica, here. We still make every single product in Southern California. We export to a hundred and six countries. And through our own initiative, financial independence through entrepreneurship, we've helped empower over a hundred thousand women around the world to start and scale their own business. But now we want to bring it home to Los Angeles. We want to make sure that Los Angeles women entrepreneurs lead the way globally. We're stepping forward with a grant in partnership with the mayor's office and with the Opportunity Fund to help fund women entrepreneurs. The Werwind Foundation will be providing major grants to women entrepreneurs. We're looking forward to scaling that. And I put a challenge out. It's the Women Entrepreneurs Challenge. We want to hear from women entrepreneurs in Los Angeles to apply, step forward. We want to hear your story. We want to help you. And I also throw a challenge out to Los Angeles businesses. If you have had your start here in our city and this city has been as good to you as it has been to us and the women in the salon industry, sixty-four percent of all salons are owned by women, we want you to step forward and we want you to match funding. We want you to step up, promote women entrepreneurs, and join together in a coalition that will be moving forward next year in making sure that Los Angeles leads the way for women entrepreneurs. The Werwind Foundation is excited to support the mayor's initiative. We're very grateful for the support of the entire council and Councilmember Rodriguez, and we're looking forward to making it an incredible opportunity for women in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. And we have a number of certificates and recognitions to do, and we will make sure that we acknowledge all of these individuals for their contributions in the city of Los Angeles. We have six honorees today that we want to recognize. Shannon Delamore, who's the co-founder of Glam Glow. Great product. Miki Reynolds, the executive director of Grid One Ten. Jane Werwind, co-founder of Dermalogica and the Werwind Foundation. Fabiola Jacque Diaz, founder of California Testing and Exfections. And Fabiola, I'm going to make special note, Fabiola was one of the first graduates of our Small Business Academy and as a result is a successful contractee with the city of Los Angeles. Lucy Lynn, founder of Absolute Security Nine. And Raquel Oracena, founder of Oracena Construction Services. And with that, we have a proclamation acknowledging Women's Entrepreneurship Day. And if it's any one single message, it's that you invest in women and we deliver and we elevate communities, not just in Los Angeles, but around the world. Thank you, colleagues.
Let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you all.
Please collect all your belongings as you will be exiting out the back. Please collect all your belongings.
We only can bring a few back.
Okay.
And we'll bring the rest.
All the way around, I'll have your staff open up the door and you walk all the way to the right. Now, all the way to the left.
Yeah.
Madam President, whoa, that sucker's live. Come on up, don't be shy. You know, I often, come on, this fellow is well-liked. Give me a couple of other folk up here. Let's get
Let's get our LAUSD family in the picture. Where are you folks?
Let's get the team up here.
Our superintendent, our
I can't believe I had to call Monica twice. You know, members, I often walk in this chamber and I think about the challenges that we face as a city council. And I'll be honest, there are some days that I walk into this chamber that are tougher than other days. But on those tough days, I seem to look towards Ms. Martinez and then I look at Mr. Weezer and I realize that they've had one of the two toughest political jobs probably in the world, that they were members of LAUSD, members of the school board. The other job that I view as probably the second most challenging job would be the job of superintendent. And ladies and gentlemen, I want you to give a round of applause to our special guest, the former governor of Colorado, but our former superintendent, Roy Romer. Give him a round of applause. He was our superintendent for almost six years, I want to say two thousand to two thousand and six, two thousand and one to two thousand and six. And just let me tell you a little bit about him. He was in the Air Force, was very successful in his own business, served in many posts in the government of Colorado, and he is a three-time governor. He was the governor of the state for three times. I think he chaired the Board of Governors and he was the Democratic National Convention Chair in the year two thousand here in Los Angeles at the Staples Center. Now, I don't know, I'm going to give, Mr. Weezer, I'm going to say you did it. Mr. Weezer, in his incredible wisdom, was responsible for bringing Mr. Romer on board. So I'm going to give that credit. So don't, you don't have to say it. He just said he was there two years before I was. But let me tell you, all joking aside, the state bond system, where related to schools, where related to how you could obtain money from the state, was set up in a way that disadvantaged, challenged communities like ours. It was a first-come, first-served type basis. But Mr. Romer and his team worked with us in Sacramento, and once they rewrote the rules, billions of dollars began to flow to the city of Los Angeles. And I was proud that I served as speaker from two thousand and two to two thousand and four, so I had the opportunity to work with the governor and his team. Members, every day you drive to work, every day you go home, every day you go to an event, you see this work. One hundred and thirty-one brand-new schools built in the city of Los Angeles. You see them everywhere. And all of the upgrades to existing schools. I think this was slightly over twenty billion dollars, which would make it the largest public works project in the United States of America. Another thing, for parents, don't you remember how the year-round schools sucked? You hated it, the kids hated it. Because of the expansions of the schools, we were able to eliminate that. And kind of return things to normalcy. And I know many of you have visited me in my district, and I'm proud that we have this great development that's called Midtown Crossing. Midtown Crossing was a former Sears, and every time we tried to develop it, something went wrong. And when people ask me now, because we have developed it, it's a beautiful Loews and a Petsmark and restaurant, and people say, Herb, how were you able to get that done? I said, it's really don't give the credit to me, give it to Roy Romer, because he threatened to buy the land. So I really had to work hard to get a developer to come in there and develop it. I promise you, he would have put a school there. They were efficient. They had a team that was so creative, and I'm telling you, they got things done. So it is really an honor for me to, and I want to say this, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Weezer. Not only did the, was the governor committed and dedicated, there are so many people that are committed and dedicated. But he understood the system and he understood politics. And I think that's what made him so successful. He understood how to push what button, when and where. And if you really think about it, one hundred and thirty-one schools in about six years, that is an unbelievable accomplishment. Let's give him and his team another round of applause. And now I'd like to turn it over to my dear friend and our colleague. When I first met Mr. Weezer, he was on the school board and we met in my office and we were discussing, I want to say, school construction. But anyway, I'd like to turn it over to the Chair of Planning, Jose Weezer.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council President. And, you know, this is long overdue. It's long overdue to give a huge thank you and a debt of gratitude to Governor Romer for what he did to the city and to LAUSD. You know, here in Los Angeles at this moment, one of our biggest issues is homelessness and affordable housing. You turn back the clock back to the early two thousands, everyone was saying, what are we going to do about the overcrowding in our school system? That was the number-one issue. You would go to places like Belmont High School. When that bell rang, you literally had to go to the wall because you couldn't even walk down that hallway. We had year-round schedules, which young boys and girls were being cheated out of regular school days and after-school programs and morning programs and other children. Huge inequality. We also had forced busing. About five thousand students were being, young kids here in Koreatown and throughout, wake up four in the morning just to catch a bus and go the other side of town. And these are not the clean fuel vehicles that we are now demanding for now, and these kids didn't have to get that supplemental education they needed. That was the big issue back then. Roy Romer came in and he said, we're going to build the schools necessary to make sure our children have an equal opportunity to succeed. And a term which I stole from my board member back, my colleague, Marlene Cantor, and to give them the opportunity to achieve their God-given potential. I've always remembered you would say those nice words there and while we were there. And Roy Romer did that, but not only in a way to make sure that we built the schools, but one of the things that's lost in this conversation is that when he started at LAUSD, the API scores for our elementary reading scores were near the bottom in the state of California. In six short years, we were about the middle or slightly above the average. And that's something that we also have to thank you for, Roy. You did a great job with that as well. Let's give him a big round of applause. And one of the things I enjoyed the most is not only working with Roy on the systems he set up, having the political acumen, the strategy and the foresight to bring in the CBs, right? How many CBs here? From the Navy? McCall and others? And one of the things I enjoyed the most is that, you know, there were some really problematic schools for a long time. A place like Belmont High School, where the Belmont Learning Campus had been sitting there vacant for years and we, the school district, hadn't done its job in making sure it delivered at high school in one of the most overcrowded areas in the country. And we would go out there and fight the good fight. Then we turned our attention to the ambassador, got that going. And all these problematic areas that hadn't, the school district hadn't been able to build schools in a very long time, Roy Romer was there not only developing the systems, but in the community, working with parents, making it happen. So we owe a huge debt of gratitude to Roy Romer for what he has done. This is long overdue. It's not only an issue of education, but an issue of social justice, an issue of making sure that this city and LAUSD and the region continues to provide young people and continue to support their dreams as well. Last but not least, I want to acknowledge my colleagues who we served with on the board, Marlene Cantor, who was there doing a wonderful job. Mike Lansing from the Bay, from Pedro or Pedro, what do we say? Pedro, right? Pedro. All right, check in with Buscaino. Everything Pedro, I check with him to see if we're doing okay. And David Tokowski, I think he was on the board when the administration brought in Roy Romer, right? A couple of years before, actually, you guys as well, right? As well? We came at the same time, right? Not too long ago. And I also want to thank Marine Kendall, who had the idea and who proposed the idea of having Roy Romer here with us today in these chambers. Thank you. You were also part of that big effort we did, providing strategy. Thank you so much. And not to mention Monica Rodriguez, worked there with Caprice Young at the time. Caprice Young was also Roy. You did love that work as well. And so, Roy, on behalf of the city, on behalf of LAUSD, we want to thank you. This was an incredible, incredible thing we did, not only in terms of numbers, but in terms of changing lives, giving opportunities for young people. We owe you a huge debt of gratitude. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Muchisimas gracias, Roy. And now I'm going to turn it over to my former chief of staff when we were on the school board and now school board president on your second round, right?
Seventh.
Seventh. And she was my chief of staff there as well, working with our superintendent on those tough schools and making sure we built the Belmont tough schools and making sure we built the Belmont, we built the Ambassador, and she continues to fight the good fight there. Our current School Board President, Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Councilmen. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, members. I've really come on behalf of all the young people who have benefited from this extraordinary act of courage and vision and love to come and say thank you, certainly to Roy Romer, but to each one of you. I think if we go around here, it's good to invest in schools and kids, because all of you have helped. And for the people who actually did the work yesterday, tomorrow, we've changed lives together. Roy Romer said, solve the problem. Build 160 schools. We did finish 31, which we needed, 131. Roy Romer said, bring 400,000 jobs to Los Angeles, help people work. But he also said, help kids read and write. We've moved graduation from 48% in '08 to 80% now, and we have more to do. But Superintendent, you have many titles. You are the Superintendent who told adults to do their jobs, and who held out the vision, listen to community, work with people, and don't be afraid to change the world. More kids read and write today, more kids go to school, kids like Jose Weezer from Boyle Heights, who absolutely is not afraid to work hard, stand up, and do their best for this universe. Superintendent Romer, you inspire, you loved other people's children, and you model how not to give up, because your life has made a difference in the public sector. We come to say thank you, sir. And yes, of course, Superintendent Past and Present, I stand here with Vivian Exian, our Acting Superintendent today. And Ms. Exian, as you all know, has been an amazing champion for children as well. She answered the call to serve as Superintendent, and yes, it is a very tough role for anyone, but I am so privileged to be here with, you know, it's wonderful, in 2017, sir, we don't have overcrowding, we don't have forced busing, we don't have Concept 6, and we are not the place where people don't want to come to school. So on behalf of Superintendent, I'll let her share a few words on her own, but thank you.
Thank you, Governor Superintendent Romer. I know everyone has already thanked you for building 131 schools, but what I would like to thank you for is for being a courageous role model for every leader in this city. We have learned from you to be resilient. We've watched you during the most difficult times in our school district demonstrate what a leader should be able to do. You've leveled the playing field as it comes to literacy in our city. You were the first Superintendent who was brave enough to stand in front of all employees and say, the priority is around the students. What happens to adult is also important, but the safety and the learning of our students is number one. You've left us many years ago, but we still think about you every day. As we have to make difficult decisions, for me as well personally, as I had the pleasure of being your Chief of Staff for a short period of time, I still think, what would Governor Romer do in this situation? And it gives me the courage, it gives me the right understanding of what to do next. I thank you immensely on behalf of the entire city, the community, and the children who are now graduates of our system as a result of what you have done for us. Thank you.
Now, let's hear from the Governor. Just give it up for Governor Romer.
I think the thanks needs to go in reverse. I was over 70, I was unemployed, I needed a job. And having served 12 years as Colorado's Governor, you gotta look hard to find a better job than that. Look, there's a very important story here this morning, and I thank you for the recognition. But the important story is making government work for people. We live in a nation in which we're having trouble making that happen. We're in local government here this morning, and I gotta tell you, I was attracted to this job. One, I have 22 grandchildren. There's no higher value in my system than to enable a person to grow and to learn and be all they can be. When I saw the opportunity here in LA, it was a job I wanted. I wanted to do this job, and I didn't work harder ever in my life in the six years, seven years I spent here. But I gotta tell you, it was not me, it was a team. You never get this done without having really competent people doing it with you. And this is a team behind me that is hard to ever duplicate. But let me tell you what it has meant to LA. When I came, there were 150,000 seats short in this system, out of a system of 730,000 students. It was a tragedy. Hadn't built a school for 30 years. We said, we're gonna solve that problem. And we raised $20 billion, the largest public works in the history of the United States, and we got it done. But let me tell you, there was such detail in there, you can't believe it. Let me start with Belmont and Jose Weezer. Belmont had sat on that corner on the freeway as a symbol of failure of this district. We had to cure Belmont, or we never would be believed in this city. And wow, we worked hard to do that. As you know, they built that school in an area that had a lot of gas coming from the ground, and in the middle of an earthquake. And we finally, after digging trenches, identifying that earthquake place, and I went to Jose Weezer, who was a member of our board, and I said, you gotta make this your project. And he did. And we always had tough votes on that board, but we turned Belmont from a failure into a success. It was a very personal experience and a very good one. Let me talk about the Ambassador Hotel. I got sued by Sirhan Sirhan, you know, and I got sued by the people who preserve buildings in LA a couple of times. And we settled, simple $5 million each time. But let me tell you, we were in a rate of inflation of 10% a year during those suits. We were very pragmatic. I walked through the bowels of that building so many times, and we said, we got to have this 32 acres, and nothing's gonna stop us. And now we got four to six beautiful schools out there. This was the kind of thing that made a difference. Let me also say, this board was so courageous. They had 200-plus condemnations and never flinched. And where did they build the schools? They built them where the children were. They built them where they needed to be built. It was the greatest income transfer since Karl Marx, to take the wealth of this city and put it where it was needed, for kids. But the main thing, and the experience we need to share, and I'll close with this, is we simply did one thing. We made government work for people in one of their most crucial need areas. We need to learn this lesson in Washington. We need to turn this nation back to where government is really serving people, not identifying which clan they belong to. And as I come back to LA, and I see these great new buildings you have, and I'm excited for you, but nothing is as important as that investment in the lives of those children. And these schools are just the beginning. We now need to improve what happens in those schools, and you're a part of local government, and you can make it work. But the message this morning to the nation is, we can make government work if we simply get on the job, say, what's the task? Do it honest, do it right, and do it boldly. I'm glad to have been a part of that, and thanks for giving me the job.
Mr. Wesson? Mr. Wesson, we have a few members on the queue to speak. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Governor Romer, this is very long overdue. And I have to say, I was really proud to have been part of that revolutionary time when you had Caprice Young, Mike Lansing, Marlene Cantor, Jose Weezer, David Tokowski, and Janethia Hayes, all at the helm along with you. And, you know, so much, and I shared this with you earlier, so much of those examples and lessons of the incredible construction process. You know, Kathy Littman, bringing in Kathy and re-envisioning how schools were gonna look, based that we couldn't have the same amounts of acreage for traditional schools. You reimagined that, everyone did, and they did it as a team. And it was an incredible example of how well government could work to help get something accomplished, and especially for our kids. It was an incredible time, and I'm so proud to have been a part of that, to see your leadership. Clearly, you still got it, sir. And it was an amazing moment in history, that even today, when I think about the responsibility that we had to construct housing for the most vulnerable population among us, many of the lessons that I learned during that time are being employed today. And I want to thank you for taking that job, for coming to be a part of Los Angeles's history. And I am so grateful for your example of leadership. Thank you so much for your service to Los Angeles, sir. You are more than deserving of this celebration. Thank you.
Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And thank you, President Wesson and Councilmember Weezer, for bringing this wonderful presentation. I'm very excited to be a part of this, and very excited to honor you, Governor Romer. I wasn't one of the people that was constructive and worked for the school district or for a school board member. I was one of the people outside picketing you, to make sure you built the schools and built them faster. And you delivered. You joined us in a lawsuit against the Governor to make sure that we had a formula that worked for Los Angeles, because Los Angeles was about to lose out on a bunch of state money for schools. The other thing I would say is really personal, but I want you to know it. I worked with a host of young people, and I was working with young people at the time. And those kids that were in school when you got here, they had never in their life been on a traditional calendar. So they went all the way from kindergarten to 12th grade on year-round schools. They didn't experience a traditional calendar until they went to college. Now those people are in their 30s, mid-to-late 30s, they have kids, their kids go to schools where nobody knows what a year-round calendar is. A social problem completely solved that at the time, people said was unsolvable. There was a bunch of people who said, we need to ship a bunch of these kids back to south of the border. There was not a belief at all that the problem could be solved. And here we have it, we're raising a generation of children who have no idea what that is. I think it's an example for what we can do going forward. And if you're not busy in a couple of years, they might need you to do some work in Washington, DC.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Weezer, for allowing us to celebrate Roy Romer Day here in Los Angeles. And I just want to add one thing to your comments, Mr. President, because you talked about this job as being one of the toughest jobs there is, and I would contend it has to be the toughest job there is. I served for a short time on a much smaller school board, and know how challenging this job is, but the Superintendent is the hardest job there is. And especially in this district, and especially in this state. Because the one thing that we haven't talked about, about the challenges that Mr. Romer faced, are the fact that at the time that he was Superintendent of LA Unified School District, this state was dead last in the country in teacher-student ratio, dead last in the country in nurse-to-student ratio, dead last in the country in librarian-to-student ratio. And we've talked for years and years in the state legislature about the need for reforms in public education. But the simple truth is that for decades, the state of California and its taxpayers have systematically underfunded public education, for decades. And we have failed to invest in the very most important thing that taxpayers can invest in in this state, and that is the education of our young people. But Roy Romer knew that you don't get to pick the terrain you fight on. You take it as it is, and that's the situation that he had to deal with. Complete underfunding by the state, with the most challenging school district probably in the United States of America. But he didn't whine about that. He took that problem on, led others to come with him, led faculty to come with him, led staff to come with him, led parents to come with him, and transformed the Los Angeles Unified School District. And generations of young people, and generations of those of us who are gonna depend on those young people, are forever grateful for the work that you did, Governor. And I am very honored to be able to represent Roy Romer Middle School as an important part of my district. I'm so glad we named that school, to always remember the contribution you made to Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. And Governor Romer, I just want to say, I echo several of the words that my colleague, Mr. Harris-Dawson, also spoke about. I was one of those kids who, my entire experience at LAUSD was about attending school year-round. And now I'm a proud parent of an eight-year-old, a third grader, at a blue-ribbon school at LAUSD, who doesn't have to experience a year-round calendar. I grew up at a time where kids were mandatorily being bused in and out of my neighborhood. And I also was one of those people that protested in the early, late 1990s, early 2000s, about the inequality that existed in our community, about our kids of color having to go to school year-round, about our schools not being adequately equipped with the tools and the teachers to teach our children that look just like me. So from an English learner, growing up with parents who did not understand the educational system, and had no choice but to send me to a low-performing school, and the fact that I can grow up and stand here as a member of the City Council and a proud parent of an eight-year-old, thank you very much for doing your job, and thank you very much for putting kids first. Congratulations.
Thank you all to all of the members. Just a quick tidbit, David reminded me, this is bigger than the city of Los Angeles, that we're talking about 26 other municipalities or cities. And another thing that came to mind, Governor, when you were talking about the great Ambassador Hotel and the school, the phenomenal educational complex that is located on that property, members, a tidbit. Tidbit, Mr. Bonin, you wanna hear this? If LAUSD did not get involved in that piece of property, it would be Trump Tower 2. It would be Trump Tower 2. That is a true story. They got engaged, because that's where he wanted to, he wanted to build the largest, I guess, building on the West Coast or what have you. Now imagine, I would never drive down Wester Boulevard if that was the case. Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, let's honor our Governor Superintendent Roy Romer.
Last but not least, if we could give a big round of applause to all the LAUSD personnel who are here. I've never seen so many LAUSD people here in this room, in chambers. Thank you so much for your work as well.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Members, let's go ahead and move on to item 13. Mr. Sidiyo? Item 13, sir?
Item 13, yes. Yes, I want to make sure that the record reflects a no vote on...
Vote no on item 13?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll. Oh. Just want to record your no vote on 13. Can we please make a note of that, Mr. Clerk? We have you, Mr. Sidiyo. Thank you very much.
Very good, Madam President.
Mr. Ofera, are you ready for item 14, sir?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. Colleagues, item 16, very, very important item that Mike Bonin and I... Oh, I'm on 14, right? Yeah, yeah. Very important item that Mike Bonin and I have been working on, along with the mayor's office. Are we on 14?
We were on 14. You want to take up 14 and 16 together?
No.
You wanted to do 14?
14 separate from 16.
That's the one we called you for, okay.
The TransAdvisory, Transgender Advisory Council, we have, I don't know if we have any members of the TransAdvisory Council with us today, but I know that we have Francisco Ortega and Sandra Cervantes here from the Human Relations Commission, or they were here earlier. They're here. Oh, there we are, okay. So colleagues, the TransAdvisory Council, or the TAC, with the support of the Human Relations Commission, has been working on a report to make recommendations to the City Council on issues and topics affecting the transgender community in Los Angeles, including supportive services for the homeless, HIV and AIDS, and other healthcare and continued job creation opportunities. The TAC was formed in 2016... The TAC was formed in 2016 at the request of the community, incubated in the mayor's office and members of the city council to support policy initiatives that would enhance services to this very vulnerable demographic. Mike Bonin and I requested the report shortly after the presidential election of 2016. I want to thank Francisco and Sandra with the Human Relations Commission, Blaine Sutton Willis with the CLA's office, David Hironstar Parsamian, Tony Aranaga, and Dave Conno of my staff, as well as members of the TAC for the collaboration on this very important report. We have a responsibility to stand up for those that are the most marginalized in society. And as we stand up, we help the members of the TAC and the community they represent stand up and assert themselves more and more, which is so very necessary for this traditionally marginalized and oppressed community. It will help us steer the conversation in the coming months as we look to implement the suggestions in the report. So colleagues, I ask for your unanimous vote to approve these recommendations. And again, Mr. Bonin, I thank you for working in partnership on this very important initiative.
Thank you, Mr. -- go ahead, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Colleagues, I join Mr. O'Farrell in asking for your aye vote on this and thanking the staff for the work on this, and the, and the TAC in particular. You know, it was a couple of years ago when the city really started to focus very intently on standing up for the transgender community and saying that we needed to put far more emphasis on the T in the LGBTQ acronym. We are a city, Mr. Sadio was leading us, to be a city of sanctuary. We also need to be a city of welcome and a city of family. And it is very, very important that we continue to send the message that our sisters and brothers in the transgender community are welcome here, are part of our family, are never left alone, are never abandoned, and never forgotten. And this is an important element of that strategy. So thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. O'Farrell, anything else? Let's go ahead and vote on this matter. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Colleagues, let's go ahead and move on to item 16. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you again, Madam President. Colleagues, today I ask for your vote again. Together, this council must take a stand against corporate greed, unfair business practices, and a pervasive atmosphere that has poisoned the trust of Angelinos, as well as millions of Americans across this great country. It was not that long ago that in 2015, when our own city attorney filed a suit against Wells Fargo, resulting in a $50 million settlement, the largest in LA's history, while allowing individual customers to continue pursuing legal action. Colleagues, this city and its residents deserve better. For these and other reasons, in March of this year, Paul Coretts and I introduced a motion directing the Office of Finance to report back on divestment from Wells Fargo and a new process for this city to choose what financial institutions it does business with in general. Today, we have two important items before this council: an ordinance strengthening the Responsible Banking Ordinance, which is item 15, and a newly crafted RFP that incorporates federal oversight standards, specifically the Community and Reinvestment Act, into our own banking process, while moving forward for a socially just and economically viable policy for Los Angeles. Although the work is not over, today we take a giant step in this city, doing its part in keeping the financial industry honest. I want to thank Chairman Paul Krikorian for assisting us in getting to this point. There's a lot to untangle. This is a heavy lift in the Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Krikorian, and, and I realize that. But I, I think that we're all in support of moving forward with this. In the coming months, I look forward to continue this work under your leadership so that we can bring honesty and accountability to any, any financial institution that operates and does business with the city of Los Angeles. This endeavor is worth it. So I thank you and I ask for your support on this very important item. You bet.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Mr. City Clerk, you had an announcement?
Yes, Madam President. Just for information purposes, amending motions for item 8 and 15 have been posted, circulated, and are now before council.
All right. Let's go get, go ahead and take multiple cards. Our first speaker is Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, are you here?
For the speakers, Madam President, if they wish to speak on item 15, they may.
Can someone get the rope for Mr. Walsh? We're getting that taken care of, sir. Mr. Walsh, the items you've filled out cards for are items 1, 2, 30, 41, 43H, 15, and general public comment. Go ahead.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential. When it comes to street lighting, you do a good job. You know, I'm not one of those white guys who say, "Let's bring all the white people back! Let's get rid of all these minorities!" I'm not one of those people. When you do a good job, I'm the first to congratulate you. And number 2, this is improvement in sunset street lighting, fine. Number 3 is more street lighting. You'd run out of these agendas, so I, this is the first time I actually saw the, I had a copy in my hand. You didn't have enough agendas. That's a problem. These are maps. Be very careful, especially if you live in the black neighborhood, because this is what they do, and your black people up here are with them. The developers change the maps and sneak it through. And guess what happens? All of a sudden, your home is next to a huge high-rise, and your home is worth crap. They do this particularly in South Central, because they want to get rid of every single black face in South Central. And I'm a white guy. I, I, I'm saying what, what's true, even though it hurts my skin color. Number 48, and then number 50. Number 48. This is a...
Madam President, we already voted on 48. Comments?
Okay, number, uh, number 50 is...
We voted on 50 already, sir, too.
Okay. Let's just say $900,000 here, $900,000 here. Sue the city. The worst you're going to end up with is $75,000, $80,000. This is the most generous city in the world, and that's because the mayor is running for president. I will go now. You can take your 22 seconds and fold it. You know where to put it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
I want to go into my public comment.
Give him his minute for general public comments. Go ahead.
I'm telling you right now that the mayor is running for president. He is, I know it's a joke. How many people here will vote for the mayor for president?
Walsh, we're not engaging with the public. Just stick to general public comment, please.
He's got the money. That's why he's almost, he was out of the state, out of the city 120 days last year. What was he doing? But here's the important thing about the mayor running, he's going to have two first families, one by his wife and one by his husband, Mr. Glenn Dake. Mr. Glenn Dake is, there's nothing wrong with having two, a husband and a wife. There's absolutely no... Why is he hiding the fact that Glenn Dake is his husband and his gardener? And he also has a job at MWD, and he makes a nice piece of change. But the city of Los Angeles...
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Our next speaker is Eric Previn. Mr. Previn, are you here? Mr. Previn, I'm going to remind you, you filled out cards for items 3, 6, 15, 35, 38, 39, 40, 43Gs, and that's, and general public comment.
And the linkage fee item. Right. That is one. Okay, fine. I'll start with that. You know, I, I think that people have been clamoring for a linkage fee, which is where a developer would pay some money to help us with the affordable housing and the permanent support of housing issues in Los Angeles. And that is obviously a good idea. I don't think this one really goes far enough. And by way of an analysis, you could look at a project in CD 12 where there were 660 market rate units. The developer, Isaac Larian, paid $200,000 in public benefit. I mean, that is a dis, a astonishing little amount of... There was another one yesterday for the Lux Hotels, 735 units, some of which are hotel rooms. That one resulted in a $3 million payment. But if that project for 660 market rate units were to take place in the Bay Area with their current rule, they would have to pay the developer $48 million into the homeless trust fund. So this is the problem that we're facing here. We are facing a shortfall in what we expect. And so it's a little too late, a little too, so that's a big concern. Item number 6, moving on to the commercial cannabis activity that my brother Joshua and I wrote about in City Watch last week. You have a web of regulatory framework that is confusing, and it is unfortunately going to hurt the small-time suppliers who you're trying to help. So I, I think you were, some of us were here at the Public Safety Joint Meeting with, with Budget and Finance on Monday, where all of the council members were like, "Are you kidding me?" Because there is no plan. There are no staff to do any kind of enforcement. There's no, it was really, really upsetting. And they're looking at a $100 possible appeal fee for anybody, not an applicant or repellent. They want to facilitate small people being able to participate, but this is not a good strategy. We simply have to do something better. And one thing to look at, because in that meeting, at the Public Safety Meeting, was a Motorola deal for $64 million without any competitive bidding. So this is outrageous, and we should get them to provide the equipment, as Bob Blumenfield was looking, that has the first net component that provides data to the police. There was another company, I think, called Harris, who had a, a very reasonable competitive, less expensive for the city bid, and yet Mitch Englander and the lobbyist behind him shoved that through so aggressively, I don't even think it's on the agenda. So I don't know why we don't get it right on cannabis in Los Angeles and leave the small-time suppliers alone. Don't start making all sorts of enforcement things about them, because then they're not going to be able to participate. And only the big, big companies, like Mr. Romer's from Colorado, who are rolling in large, are going to take over. And I don't think that that was our intention originally, so I think that's a big mistake. On item number 38, I think that's your $200,000 animal. Cha-ching, we say thank you. ASPCA is providing $200,000. Whether or not that's the best investment or of their money is a, is a question that could be brought up, but I don't know. And on our number 18, what are you doing with the Fox TV Studios? $89,000 refund, and there's no backup documentation supporting such a thing.
Madam President, we've already voted on item 18 already.
I mean, that is outrageous. On the editorial page of the New York...
Give him one minute for general public comment. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
The general public comment is about the doling out of these refunds. Because I have made a little investigation, and what I see is, and for folks listening, one of the best investments in Los Angeles is a contribution to your council member or the mayor or the city attorney. Because when you do that, you automatically unleash an inexplicable, and the public can't look at it, refund. And the companies that have done so, including Fox Television Studios, which I certainly know, but it includes other ones, like Jeko Residential, owned by Garrett Lee, who's one of the Jamison Fortune, that's one of the largest Southern California real estate companies. So rather than linkage fee, they're getting money back, and significant money back. Also, Outdoor or Outfront Media Group, which is a large billboard company that has the metric, huge amount of money, and they're getting back $1 million. While we're coming after, you know, developers who are trying to put up housing with a not effective fee, we got to get it right. Something is wrong in the calculus down here, and I don't know how we can fix it so easily. But one good start would be to put stuff on the agenda, make it clear.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk? Mr. City Clerk, we, why don't we go ahead and revisit our general meeting and go into our special meeting? Can you please call the roll?
Very good, Madam President. Blumenfield, Bonin, Busciano, Sadio, Englander, Harris-Dawson, Weezer, Kresk, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Westen, 14 members present. Madam President, would you like to send all items in today's special meeting forthwith?
Yes, that will be the order.
Very good. Items 52 through 62 are items for which public carings have been held. Committee reports for items 53 through 61 have been submitted, posted, and circulated and are before council for its consideration. And Madam President, it should be noted that there's been a request to send item 65 back to the Public Safety Committee.
That will be the order without objection. Members, are there any specials? Mr. Weezer?
53.
53 special for Mr. Weezer. Any other item specials, member? Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll on the remaining balance through 62. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Madam President, items 63 and 64 are items for which public carings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us.
Yes, Madam President, cards on both items.
Okay, let's go ahead and take up Herman. Are you here? Taking up items 63 and 64.
Now that we're on the special in CD 13, Mr. O'Farrell, regarding vesting zone change, these are items discussed in PLUM. What is PLUM? Plan Use Management. The same way I was discouraged to speak last night during PLUM on the mayor's recommendations for council, subject to the approval of the height district changes. You see, when you do something right on the present adoption of accompanying ordinance, rather than violate our constitutional right on these issues, let us be heard. No profanity, no vulgarity. I took my meds. Then I go to item 64, rookie city attorney that looks like the Keebler Man.
Stick to the item.
It states in CD 15, which belongs to the silver-tongued cop Joe Busciano, it's a reminder that vacant lots located off of Sixth Street should be renamed 666 Street in order to the adjacent Warner Grand Theater. Why? Because that's where you get to see movies that are rated X, like Jose Weezer sleeping with Francine...
That is not on the agenda. Stick to the item. I'm going to ask you to sit down.
In addition to the General Service Committee wave consideration, I disapprove. On behalf of all you here who are ratepayers and taxpayers in a constellation with the city attorney, which is a conflict of interest, shut the fuck up!
Thank you very much. Sit down. Next speaker is Wayne Spindler for items 63 and 64.
Yes, and a happy Chanukah to all of you. So we get to 63, CD 13, PLUM, developers, floor ratio, pure fucking bullshit. Now we talk about campaign donation for rooftop label. This is too big. Everybody's against it, except one person. The criminal, Jose Weezer, loves it, because he slushes in pork. Yes, he slushes himself in corruption in pork, yes, like he's did with Francine Godoy, yes. The absolute... yes, absolutely. Then we get to number 64, San Pedro, that's the silver-tongued cop, Joe Busciano, the police beater, yes, so he wants to beat down the Warner Grand Theater. Then we get to countering violent extremism. Mr. Spindler's a victim of violent extremism-
And that item has been continued, Madam President, it's not second comment.
You're not sticking to the item, you know, Mr. Spindler, please sit down. You're just disrupting the meeting, you're not speaking to any of the two items. You're done, thank you very much. Escort him to his seat, or you can ask him to leave. That concludes speakers for items 64 and 63, 64. You're continuing to disrupt the meeting, Mr. Spindler? Let's go ahead and vote on items. Mr. Previn, you filled out a card for 64? Are you here? Mr. Previn? 64, Mr. Previn.
Thank you. Is this in the special meeting, or is this, I know it's the Warner Grand project-
Yes, continue 64.
You know we're in the special meeting, and if you're paying attention, you know that you filled out a card for 64.
Oh.
So, go ahead and, go ahead and speak to 64.
I do pay attention, and, and this is a, another acquisition proposal by Busciano and Sadio for the Warner Grand, which is a large space that is being redeveloped. It was one of, if I'm not mistaken, the CRLA properties. One of the thoughts that has come up is, could it possibly be used to solve the horrifying homelessness crisis in our midst? And the answer is no, it's going to be another fancy development. So, that is unfortunate, and, you know, I don't know when we're going to get a chance to address these issues, but I take offense at your comment, and this meeting is run poorly. So, thank you.
Let's go ahead, members, and vote on items 63 and 64. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Let's go ahead. Mr. Weezer, item 53?
Thank you very much, Madam President, and this is an item that city staff has completed an extensive selection process for a developer to move forward on one of the last, largest remaining pieces of property in downtown LA. As many of you know, the skyline of downtown is changing, and we're getting that downtown we've always wanted. We're getting that downtown that doesn't shut down at 5 o'clock and the light switch turns off. There's a lot more activity, a lot more tourists, a lot more people living there, and this project is going to add more of that. It has some residential units, it has a hotel, open space, which the downtown community called for. It's right near our metro site, and it's going to be a great development to keep moving in that direction. But I wanted to call attention to this to particularly thank the CLA, the CAO, and EWDD, who did an extensive search and city selection process. They interviewed various proposals, it was very competitive, and just yesterday, the Economic Development Committee voted unanimously to approve the CLA's recommendation to select the ALP team and move forward with negotiating an ENA and future disposition agreement. So, I wanted to thank also the proposal, the development team. We look working, forward to working with you. One of the things I was most impressed about this is, we are a very diverse city, and as downtown grows, as the city grows, as more economic opportunities continue to present themselves, this is a team that's committed to minority participation, small business participation, and one of the few minority-owned development teams that will be developing one of the largest projects in downtown LA. We should be proud of that as a city. So, thank you very much, and we look forward to working with the developer, and I want to thank the planning department as well for all the work they're doing in moving forward this item and downtown LA. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on this, on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Kerkhorn, do you want to speak to items 66 and 67 in closed session of the special meeting?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. Both items 66 and 67 are settlements that have been considered by the Budget and Finance Committee, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. Those matters can be voted on in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Kerkhorn. Seeing no questions, Mr. City Clerk?
For item 66, in the case entitled Steve Brown versus City of Los Angeles, at all, there's a recommendation to expend $250,000 in settlement. And for item 67, in the case entitled Leah Manning versus City of Los Angeles, at all, there's a recommendation to expend $200,000 in settlement.
Those two items are now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Let's go ahead and, did you have an announcement?
No, I was just asking if you'd wish to adjourn the special and return to the regular.
Yes, let's go ahead and adjourn our special, go into regular, a regular meeting.
And Madam President, in the meantime, motion 15B has been submitted and circulated.
Okay, let's do eight. Okay, Mr. Weezer, item eight.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and colleagues, we are about to discuss and hopefully vote in the affirmative on one of the most important policy issues that we've faced in a very long time, and that's the linkage fee. As many of you know, this is an item and a policy direction that the mayor called for a couple of years ago, and also in our comprehensive strategic plan for homelessness, it called for the council to adopt this fee in order for us to prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place. In June, in February of this past year, the citywide planning commission moved forward this item and sent it to our planning committee, and over the last few months, the planning committee has gone in the weeds and has immersed itself in coming up with the best policy to move this item forward. We, I want to thank my colleagues on the PLUM Committee and all this council and individual council members for participating in that discussion, for giving their ideas, and I think what we have before us is a policy that we all agree upon that would help us achieve our goal. Our goal is to provide a permanent revenue stream for our Affordable Housing Trust Fund so that we could build more affordable housing. We will hopefully provide anywhere between 80 to 100 million dollars a year that other affordable housing developers can tap into and leverage with federal and state dollars to make that possible. While this is good news, the bad news is that the state has cut down on dollars available for affordable housing significantly. The state has done away with community redevelopment agencies, which the city relied upon for a lot of its funding for affordable housing, and just as we speak, the federal government is looking to cut tax credits that will provide federal funding for more affordable housing. So, it's becoming even more urgent that we do something here locally to provide funding to build affordable housing. One of the things that is also alarming is that in 2010, we had about $100 million in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It's now come down to nearly zero. We need to take bold steps and immediate steps to fill that trust fund with about $100 million each year. That will hopefully provide about 1,500 affordable housing units a year. It will also help us preserve affordable housing covenants that are expiring, expiring at an alarming rate, and we have no real funding for that at this time. And we also want to make sure that we provide, more importantly, a possibility for people not having to decide whether they're going to pay the rent or put food on their table. And that is very real. If you look at the data and you look at how many people are having to make that decision, it is an alarming rate that's increasing for people who have to make that decision. And if you look at the face of homelessness today, the demographics are changing. The largest increase in people who have, who are becoming homeless today in the city of LA are those who just simply cannot afford to pay rent. So, colleagues, thank you for your participation in this. I also wanted to acknowledge the work of our advocates who have been working hard to get us here. They not only provided the advocacy, held workshops, but also urged the council to work quickly on this. Our goal was to come up with a policy by the end of this year, and here we are, the last day before council recess, before the end of the year for us, so hopefully we could move on this expediently and help people have a place to put shelter over their head. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. So, what we're going to do, I'm going to open public comment. You're eating into your time. I'm going to open public comment. Fifteen minutes, Mr. City Attorney, one minute each. I want Michael Franny Ortiz, Eric Velasquez, Aisha Jones, Ariniyo, Maria Favala, come on. If I call your name, just come get in line. James Porter? Yes, identify yourself. Yes?
Good morning, my name is Eric, I'm part of Sage, and I've been part of the South LA community for over 20 years. However, I spent the first seven years of my life in Mexico. My home at the time was actually made up of adobe, aluminum sheets, plastic tarps, an outhouse, and no running water. So, fast forward to the future, affordable housing has brought many blessings to me and my family. My sister has graduated from UAC with three degrees, my youngest sister has recently been accepted to the National Honor Society. My dad can afford to buy a new car and give his old one to my brother, who is expecting a baby. Families have a limited amount of resources, and when they have to spend more and more of those resources on housing, they have less and less for anything else. So, please, give people a chance to spend, give people a chance to save, and most importantly, give people a chance to invest. On that note, there are, there are a lot of people who have invested in this city.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker. Next speaker. Next speaker. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, my name is Fanny Ortiz, and I represent the Alliance for Community Transit LA, which is ACT LA, a coalition of 35 organizations fighting for affordable housing and access to transit for all. I am a proud resident of Weezer District, and I'm here to show how having access to affordable housing made an impact on the quality of my life, allowing me the opportunity to work and go back to school, become a community organizer, including winning, winning a seat in the Bull Heights Neighborhood Council, and serving the city of LA as a budget advocate. My story is one of many, but when shared becomes transformative. This is a historic moment for the city of LA. The passage of linkage fee will represent a big win in the fight for more affordable housing in Los Angeles, and for the first time, LA has created a permanent source of local funding for affordable housing. We would not be here today without the massive citywide effort and coalitions like ACT LA coming together to make affordable housing available to many more families like mine. The linkage fee is needed now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ariniyo.
I, Ariniyo Opinaldo, a member of ACE, Unidad, Sage, Ciara Club, One LA, and CD9 Coalition all support the linkage fee. However, I am here to push an increase of the linkage fee to $18 per square foot. Experiencing displacement at my church, community of 2,000 families, including my family, has made me more active to investigate more displacement through UCLA, Boyle Heights, UCA Medical Center, Filipino neighborhoods, and Crenshaw Mall. Developers come up with Trump lies, we do not develop here anymore if you approve of the linkage fee. Yet, these gentrification builders are attacking people of color, Asians, blacks, Native Americans, and Hispanics. Big developers, Wall Street banks, and Wall Street landlords, with a consummate vote, can assist the homelessness and displacement and termination of cultural communities that they created. I hope you will stand for the people first.
Thank you. Thank you. And also, if Oliver Bowie, Kendra Dodds, Chris Ratake get in line, next speaker, please. Identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Aisha Jones, I live in Venice, in Council District 11, and I work for Venice Community Housing. I strongly support this linkage fee and urge you to pass it today with the amending motion to increase the fees in the higher markets. I'm a resident manager in a building that provides both affordable housing and permanent supportive housing, so I see every day the difference that affordable housing makes in people's lives. I manage our waiting lists, so unfortunately, I see the enormous need for affordable housing every day. We have approximately 1,600 active households on our waiting list, with an average wait time of over five years, so people are waiting years for an opportunity, and most may never get a chance. Our waitlist is in addition to the thousands of people without housing at all in the centralized waitlist. This is why our city must do so much more to address the housing crisis, and passing this linkage fee is the next step. We look forward to your leadership today in finally establishing a linkage fee for Los Angeles and the efforts to maximize those fees, and we will need your continued leadership in ensuring that every tool and policy option is available.
Thank you. Next speaker, identify yourself.
Hi, my name is James Porter. Good morning, city council member. I am with the Los Angeles Community Action Network, and I live in City Council District 14. This week, National Public Radio reported that for the first time since 2010, the national homeless number had gone up, largely due to sharp increases in homelessness in LA County. I see this every day in Skid Row, but I also see all the luxury housing being built in downtown as well. The homeless crisis is affordable housing crisis. We need more deeply affordable housing. We also need to preserve what we have now. The linkage fee will be available for both affordable housing production and preservation. We urgently need these flexible resources, not only in CD14, but throughout our city LA.
Thank you. Thank you. If I could also ask Rabbi Noah, Noah Frakis to come get in the line, and Vicky Kurtzenbaum? Yes, ma'am, identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Maria, I'm from Local 11.
Wait, what's your name?
Maria Favella, from Local 11.
Okay.
I am a hospitality worker that struggles to pay rent. Working, working people need housing we can afford. We are seeing our members pushed, getting pushed out of the, of the city. It is time to say enough is enough and pass this fee in order to build more housing for working families. United Here stands with the Coalition for a Just LA today to pass the linkage fee and pass it with a higher fee in high-market areas, which support increasing the fee for $15 to $18 per square feet, square foot in high-market. We will ensure enough venue and generated to make a significant impact on housing in LA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good morning, city council. I'm honored to be here for this landmark linkage fee vote today. My name is Michael, and I'm with the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing, and we are a proud member of the Coalition for a Just LA. Two years of hard work culminates today, and we're incredibly thankful and look forward to working with you all to ensure that with the linkage fee alone, that we double the units of affordable housing that the city produces every year. That's thousands of units of affordable housing over the next 10 years by passing the linkage fee today. I want to thank everyone on the PLUM Committee, and especially Councilman Jose Weezer, for his leadership and dedication to all Angelenos. While we still have a lot of work ahead of us to address the housing and homeless crisis, the first immediate step is maximizing the revenue the linkage fee collects without impacting the housing market, and we look forward to working with council members, Bonner and Rue, on that. Thank you all, and please know that you can count on SCAMF and the Coalition for a Just LA every step of the way to ending homelessness in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Bowie, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you. Good morning, President and council. One, I'd like to strongly encourage that we would raise the linkage fee from $15 to $18. We've done a great deal of work, and I like your visionary leadership of passing HHH. This only would actually move forward in what we're trying to do, is to make LA a place where everyone is treated equally and given an opportunity for a place to live. Also, with the American dream, most of us grow up hoping to own a home, and with the prices here in Los Angeles tripling over the past few years, it has almost put homeownership out of reach for most of the Angelenos who have helped build this city, and has allowed new developers who have just come in here to make money and get rich and continue to create a divide from the rich and the poor. So, I believe we have an opportunity to promote, not only by raising to $18 an hour, but promote justice for all.
Thanks, Reverend. Next speaker. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Vicky Kurtzenbaum, I'm here with Ben Diarc, a Jewish social action group. We only have to step outside this building to see that we have- We only have to step outside this building to see that we have a housing crisis here in the city, people living on the street. And just yesterday, we voted to supply portable toilets and showers for areas of the city that have high homeless populations. This is unconscionable in a city of wealth that people would be without basic services. Bendy Ark strongly supports a linkage fee on developers. We recommend that fee be raised to eighteen dollars per square foot on high-market areas. Developers benefit greatly from projects in our city. It's high time they give back.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Kendra Dodds. I'm a senior program director at Enterprise Community Partners, also a co-organizer for Coalition for a Just LA. We're very excited to see that the Affordable Housing Linkage Fee is before you today. It's been a long time coming, many hearings. The ordinance has been, you know, picked apart and really thought about in a thorough way. We want to support it. We hope you will adopt it today, and we also want you to encourage you to consider increasing the high fee from fifteen dollars to eighteen dollars. Thank you all, and please vote yes on this.
Thank you. If I could get Katie McKeon, Katie McKeon, Jorge Casaneda. Yes.
Hi, good morning, Mr. President, members of the City Council. So glad to be here today. My name is Rabbi Noah Farquhar. I'm one of the co-organizers of the Coalition for Just Los Angeles and a proud member of LA Voice, and I'm here to encourage you to vote yes on the linkage fee because our coalition has been pushing for this for a couple of years in conjunction with some of the honorable members who are sitting here, including Member Weezer, Member Harris Dawson, Member Rue, Member Bonin, Member Koritz, Member Kocorian, and others. We're very excited to be here today. In fact, I just want to give a sense of gratitude to all of our coalition members who are here today. So if you are here as part of our coalition who represents all the districts in Los Angeles, just stand up for just a second. Let them see who you are. We're here to vote for a linkage fee today to help affordable housing. Thank you so much for your time, and we encourage yes on this vote.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, everybody. What happens?
Identify yourself. Your name.
My name is Viana Rogers. I am the founder of LAMER, and I also work with Trust South LA. I'm also a community leader and the founder of JTC Aspire, giving back to children of Juanita Take Campus. My question, what happens to the educated when they become ill? Prior to my diagnosis of full-blown lupus, I educated myself in the theater department. I, of course, know at that time, I didn't think or question about low-income housing or affordable housing because I had the money to live wherever I wanted to. Well, I became extremely ill. Prior to my diagnosis, I was put into an induced coma. I busted my face wide open, and I am known as what is called a fall risk.
Thank you. Thank you. I need the next speaker. Next speaker. Thank you. Next speaker. And if you could state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Odile Davis. California is my hometown. Los Angeles, my home, particularly after forty years, and I care when I see so many homeless in a great city like Los Angeles and the mayor, I believe, doing the best to put everyone in the home. This money for housing, the money is given, and when these buildings are built up, they become for the rich and famous. Poor people being put out of their home to make that place a house of the money people, and that is a concern I have.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Katie McKeon, and I'm an attorney with Public Counsel. My organization works with affordable housing developers, community-based organizations, and individual Angelenos facing unjust evictions, displacement, and homelessness. The housing crisis is undeniable. We see it every day in our work, and your community see it every day as families and individuals struggle to stave off homelessness by living in unaffordable, overcrowded, and unsanitary conditions. We support the Affordable Housing Linkage Fee as a necessary and meaningful response to the housing crisis. We also support the amendment to increase the fee from fifteen dollars to eighteen dollars in high-market areas. You can't solve homelessness without affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Hello, yes, my name is Jorge Casaneda. I am with the Coalition to Preserve LA. So earlier this week, the United Nations sent over a monitor by the name of Philip Alston to tour the LA encampments, and that was a wake-up call. Mayor Garcetti and Councilmember Wesson's failure to address LA's worst humanity crisis since the 1930s Depression era is global news at this point. Alston, New York University Law Professor, said politicians in any context are there to put a positive spin on what they're doing and to insist that existing problems are about to be resolved. The truth is, no units of homeless housing have been erected since voters approved the 1.2 billion HHH funds years ago, a year ago. Mayor Garcetti and Councilmember Wesson did not enact emergency plans to free funds and counteract bureaucracy. Mayor Garcetti and Mr. Wesson did not rein in costs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
This is a no, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Weezer, I've got members on the queue. Did you want me to go directly to them, or... Okay, so let me call on Mr. Mike Bonin first.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks to Mr. Weezer and members of Plum, to CPC. I know Mr. Ambrose is here, and to the mayor's office for all the work on this, and for all the folks who've come down here today several times to push for this. I was speaking last week with a teacher at a preschool on the West Side who lives with her son, who is about to have grandchildren, and there's not going to be enough room for her in the place she's living. And she cannot find a place to live on the West Side within a reasonable commute of where she works. I spoke last month with a family that's living in a car on the West Side that used to live in a place, got priced out of it, and is struggling even with a voucher to find a place to move into. I speak regularly with students at LMU or other colleges who tell me they're on the verge of graduation and are afraid they can't afford to live in Los Angeles. And I talk all the time with employers who say how hard it is to get people to work for them because they can't afford to live near where they work. Our affordable housing crisis here in Los Angeles is an existential crisis, and it is creating so many other problems. We know it creates our homeless problem. It creates a traffic problem when people have to commute an hour and a half to work because they can't afford to live in downtown or on the West Side or in Hollywood, and that creates pollution. It's a pervasive problem that's getting worse, and we outlined in our comprehensive homelessness strategy a year ago a number of different ways to address homelessness, and this is one of many of them. We have been dying of thirst for a funding source for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and this gives us one way of doing that. There are those who warn that this will be harmful, and they'll say that the sky is falling. We have heard that before we created a living wage. We have heard that before we created a higher minimum wage in Los Angeles. I heard it when I was in college in Boston in the late 1980s, when Boston approved linkage fee in the late 1980s. The sky did not fall there. They came up with a funding source for affordable housing, and Boston boomed because more people could afford to live there. We can do that here. One of the pieces that is really smart about this ordinance and this proposal is that it does not treat all places in the city equally. It understands that there are some markets that are harder to build in, Mr. Harris Dawson's district or Mr. Buscayino's district, where people are hungrier for more development and more housing. And it creates a tiered system. It says that in the areas that are more high-market, let's have a higher fee. In the areas that are harder to develop, let's have a lower fee. And then let's use that fund to build affordable housing and preserve affordable housing elsewhere. I think we can actually do even better, which is why Mr. Rue and Mr. Koritz and I, representing the highest market areas of the city, are submitting a motion this morning asking Planning and H-Sid to report back in sixty days with an analysis of the market impacts of increasing the fee in the high-market areas to eighteen dollars. And let's see if we can raise that even higher and help even more. Thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to underscore a few things here. First of all, the importance of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. In 2012, with the dissolution of the community redevelopment agencies, that effectively took the city of Los Angeles out of the business of funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It removed a key funding source, where in twenty to twenty-five percent of the fees collected used to go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. When I was a new councilmember in 2013, the trust fund was somewhere hovering around twenty million dollars. It has been suffering for so long now, and the trust fund, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is so critical as a funding source to build permanent supportive housing for the homeless, low-income housing, mixed-use projects. When we replenish this trust fund with the creation of the linkage fees, we are going to enjoy another byproduct of this, and that is increased production of permanent supportive housing for the homeless and low-income housing that has nothing to do, actually, with the projects that the linkage fees will apply to. Another really great benefit to this is that projects that are mixed income, market rate all the way to very low income, the entire project can be exempt from any linkage fee whatsoever. And I wanted to say to the development community, that is actually an incentive. So it is unusual to actually incentivize development when you oppose a linkage fee, but Los Angeles is doing that with this formula. So I really want to thank Mr. Weezer for his leadership. For four years, I've been wringing my hands on how do we replenish the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It's critical for the production of affordable housing and permanent supportive housing for the homeless. And I want to thank the Planning Department for your intensive work to make this ordinance so completely well-thought-out. I mean, really, hats off to you. And then the mayor for his advocacy for this and taking a leadership role and working hand-in-hand with Mr. Weezer's office and members of the Plum Committee. I also want to thank my colleagues today for approving my value-capture initiative. Finally, after three years and three months of introducing that motion in September of 2014, here's what the value-capture does, and we've already approved that. It ensures that all pathways to multifamily housing can lead to the production of affordable housing across the city with a required covenant of fifty-five years for the first time ever. That is a good move for the city of Los Angeles, and this means that there is a gateway to create affordable housing across the city, not just in certain areas where it's embraced, but across the entire city of Los Angeles. We need to house people where they live, and this will do that. I can't say enough good things about this, and I congratulate you again, Mr. Weezer, for your leadership on this very important initiative, and I would urge a unanimous eye vote on this one. Thank you.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is one of those critical issues that will define our times. It is the affordability crisis that we are living through is defining the nature of what Los Angeles looks like, and I am so proud that we are taking this step today to help with that. We're taking major step forward. Now, on the federal side, there's a lot of steps backwards that we're trying to account for, but at least we're moving in this positive direction. And I wanted to really thank Chairman Weezer and the other Plum Committee members. When this... When I just started on the Plum Committee recently, and the first big meeting that I had as a Plum Committee was dealing with this issue, and the chair and the other committee members indulged me because the cake was almost baked, but I came into it with a lot of questions and, you know, a dozen amendments. But you worked with me, and we all figured those out, and I think created an even better cake because we added amendments that created new opportunities to help the missing middle class and to worry about the unintended consequences and to do a whole number of things. And I also want to thank the groups, the Coalition for a Just LA. They were out there. They met with me numerous times. They were able to work on these amendments and work with all of us to make a product that is really going to help people as we move forward. So really, this is an important moment. I'm thrilled to be part of it, and I'm grateful for all of you who got us to this point and for the committee members who indulged me as a new member of that committee to work through this issue and to get us to where we are today, and I proudly support this bill, and I urge your eye vote.
Mr. Buscayino.
Thank you, Mr. President. So colleagues, each and every year, the LA Area Chamber of Commerce comes before this body and presents the City of Los Angeles Economic Impact Report. And in the last five years I've been here, Council District 15 has ranked at the bottom of the number of building permits that have been pulled. So of course, when this fee, the slinkage fee, came before us, I was a bit concerned. In fact, time and time again, I turned to my colleague here to my right, Mr. Bonin, and said, "I know CD 11 is booming. Housing is coming online. I want a piece of that action." I turned to Mr. Rue. "David, you have folks coming to you wanting to build. I'm telling David, bring your folks to CD 15 from Watts to the waterfront. We need to develop and bring all levels, all income levels of housing in my district." In fact, colleagues, I feel I play more of a real estate agent than councilmember at times. Every single month, I'm in the car showing properties from Watts to Harbor City to Harbor Gateway to Wilmington and San Pedro. On the left, you have this lot. On the right, you have that lot. And time and time again, developers say, "You know what, councilman? We love to build in CD 15, but oftentimes, just doesn't quote-unquote pencil out. Just not, doesn't just, doesn't work out for us financially." In a time where we're redeveloping our waterfront in Wilmington and San Pedro, just this week, the mayor and I announced a La Crete's Blue Economy incubator space at Altice that's going to create a new level, a new economy on the Marine Research Campus at Altice that's going to need housing to house those people working at that Marine Research Center. So I'm just a bit concerned that with a fee, it's going to continue to move folks away, move investors out of my district elsewhere. So I spoke with the mayor. I spoke with my colleagues on Plum, and with the work of the Planning Department and HUD and the mayor's office, we found a tiered system that Mr. Bonin alluded to earlier. Then this tiered system, I feel, addresses some of my concerns, but I'm still very concerned about the issue of increasing the supply of the missing middle housing. And for that reason, I'm supporter of my council colleague, Mr. Sadio, on item number forty-two, and his efforts to address homeownership opportunities for families in the 120%, 150% AMI category. While the linkage fee will help reestablish an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it does very little towards creating an environment that incentivizes building enough housing to meet demand. And the reason that so many people are paying half of their salaries toward rent and others go into homelessness is because there is simply not enough housing. So we need to do more to create an environment that incentivizes the production of housing at all income levels, and in a time where there is interest in developing and redeveloping parts of Watts all the way down to the waterfront, we need to ensure that we fast-track these types of projects so we put some keys into the hands of those who are thirsting to have a roof over their head. Thank you.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I really want to thank the leadership of our chairman of Plum, Councilman Weezer, and the entire Plum Committee for the countless hours that you guys have put in. And I concur with all my colleagues who have spoken today. This is a long time coming. And you know, there was a study for the past two years at UCLA by the Zev Yaroslavsky Institute that did a study and a survey on the quality of life in Los Angeles and the concerns. And of course, no surprise, the top concern was public safety. But surprisingly, the second concern was fear of becoming homeless. But more shockingly, when you think about fear of becoming homeless, we're always thinking of lower-income individuals, but fear of becoming homeless extended to the middle class, to individuals who made from eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. And I thought to myself, how could someone making a hundred thousand or a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year be afraid of becoming homeless? Well, if you live in one of my areas or one of the high-market areas where rent is easily, on average, three thousand dollars a month, even though you're making over a hundred thousand dollars after taxes, your income is, your payment is literally, half of your income is on just rent alone. is, your payment is literally, half of your income is on just rent alone. So if you lose your job, you lose your home, which is why what we’re doing here today with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is the bottoms-up movement of creating the necessary housing that we need, and it’s not just about building new housing, but it’s helping working-class families and those union families, not just help build these homes, but live in these homes. So I’m very honored to be part of the council where we’re passing this motion and this ordinance today, and of course, we thought it didn’t go enough, so I’m happy to have partnered with my fellow colleagues, councilmember Bonin and Coress in increasing for the high-market areas to $18. And I just want to end by saying that we did not do this alone. It’s all the hard work of the Coalition that we’ve been working with, the Coalition for Just L.A., and actually, the movement and the support for moving it to $18 came from your very own Rabbi Farkas, where we had a cup of coffee and where he urged and guaranteed support for the movement to $18. So I really want to thank the Coalition, and thank you for all being here today.
Mr. Sadio.
Mr. President, I want to thank you for your leadership on this matter, making sure that at last, this can come before us. Councilmember Weezer, thank you for your leadership. Colleagues, we have not just an affordability crisis, but we have a housing crisis in the City of Los Angeles. We need 100,000 units of housing, and we need it at all levels. Six toilets in downtown Skid Row is woefully inadequate. It is the smallest of the first steps. What we need to do is make sure that we have adequate and sufficient and abundant housing so that simple rules like supply and demand can take place. Where’s my phone? I tell my staff all the time, a cell phone that all of us have in this room used to cost as much as a car. It was a big box. Today, depending on who your service provider is, they’re free. They’re free because they’re built in abundance, and so you can have these for free. This computer that could have propelled a rocket in the 60s is now free because there’s an abundance, and that’s what we need here in Los Angeles. We need an abundance of housing for everyone because we’re all God’s children, rich or poor, black or white, straight or gay, and we all have a right to live and should have a right to live close to where we work. It’s good for our environment, it’s good for our quality of life, it’s good for public safety. There is an abundance of great things that come from this. Linkage fee is part of it, and I am happy to vote for it today. But it is simply one tool that’s needed to deal with a friggin’ huge problem. And let us not forget, when we talk about whether we call it the middle class, the working class, whether we talk about workforce housing, we’re talking about the people of Los Angeles. People who work in this building should be able to live close to this building. People who work in this city should be able to live in this city. Those firefighters that are putting their lives on the line should not have to drive in from the forest reaches of the inland empire or the high desert or the borders of San Diego and Orange County. Those people putting their life on the line today should be able to live in the cities that they fight for and defend each and every single day. And so I’m pleased and happy to hear the support for item 42, that is a companion and partner of this, that will make sure that our college graduates have a place to live in this city, that new nurses at our healthcare facilities and new healthcare providers and new home care workers have a place to live in this city, that people who work for the City of Los Angeles can have a place to live in the City of Los Angeles. And so I’m happy to vote for this, but I want us to continue momentum from this initiative because we have a lot to build, and we have to build it now. Population growth has continued, but housing growth has not, and so we must do all that we can to ensure that everyone in the city has a place to live in the city. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, this is a very important moment, and first, I think it’s important that we acknowledge the leadership of Mayor Garcetti in setting this goal for us, driving this goal forward. It’s been an important priority of the mayor, and he’s worked closely with this council, Councilmember Weezer, and Councilmember Sadio, and yourself, Mr. President, and other members of the council, and with this community of activists to try to get us to this very important and historic day. Because like Mr. O’Farrell and I think the rest of us, as budget chair, I have struggled mightily to try to figure out, how can we get more money into this Affordable Housing Trust Fund? And it has seemed an impossible task, and part of the reason that it has seemed impossible is because of the extraordinary expense of trying to find policy solutions that will enhance affordability. And I want, in addition to rising in support of the linkage fee, I want to also issue sort of a challenge to all of us and to the folks who are here for the next step, and that is in addressing the exact problem that Councilmember Sadio just raised. We cannot build our way out of affordability unless we reduce the cost of affordable housing. Right now, every single month in this city, we’re opening up permanent supportive housing units, and we’re opening up subsidized affordable housing, and sometimes, they’re a half a million dollars a door, a half million dollars a door, which is more than what it costs to build a 2,000-foot, single-family home in this city. So if we don’t drive down that cost significantly, it almost doesn’t matter how much money we have in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we will never be able to make a significant enough dent in affordability. So I ask all of you to please join in that effort, pressure this council, pressure the mayor, pressure our housing department, pressure everyone that you can pressure to ensure that we continue to take the steps necessary to make it easier, faster, and cheaper to build new affordable housing. Continue to keep the pressure on us to find other solutions, like what Mr. Weezer mentioned, the idea of extending existing affordability covenants, which is a fast way to take existing affordability and guarantee it into the future. It’s extremely cost-effective, it’s extremely environmentally sound to do that, and it’s a no-brainer that we should be devoting considerable resources to do that. But if we don’t address that cost, doesn’t matter if you raise the linkage fee, you could double it. If we don’t bring costs down, we’re never going to make a big enough impact. So please, let’s make this the first day of that movement to try to drive for more affordable, affordable housing in this city. I rise in support of this measure.
Thank you, Mr. Kokorian. Mr. Coress.
Thank you, Mr. President. And first of all, I would say I agree with exactly what Mr. Rue and Mr. Kokorian have just said, so I won’t plow any of the ground that’s already been discussed. I will say, while we’re very short of housing, I think if we build more market-rate housing, we will probably bring in some of that population of new people that say, “Oh, now there’s more housing in Los Angeles, now I can move there.” What I think the real shortage is, is affordable housing, and we have to focus on that as our main problem to be solved. I appreciate Mr. Bonin and Mr. Rue leading on the effort to increase the linkage fee in our own districts. And obviously, we don’t want less economic development in our own districts, but we recognize that these are superheated areas, everyone wants to develop. We probably won’t lose much in the way of development in our districts, but we will gain more funding towards the linkage fees and towards affordable housing. And if by chance, a handful of projects went elsewhere in the City of Los Angeles, so be it, there are other districts that are more in need of housing and development than ours, and that will be fine, too. So I believe this is a win-win, whatever the result may be, I don’t see a negative to it, and we absolutely have to create much, much more affordable and homeless housing if we’re going to survive as a city and solve the most intractable problem we face.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Coress. Okay, so I would like to definitely thank Mr. Weezer, our chair, for all of the work. I want to thank all of the members of the council because you guys did a good job coming up with wise suggestions. I want to thank Mr. Ambrose and his team from the commission, and of course, Vince for all, Bertoni for all the work that you’ve done. And now I get to do something that I want to do, which is to call for this vote. I recognize, calm down, Mr. City Attorney, you’re killing, you’re stepping on my coat here now. I know I’ve got to turn to you to say something official, but now, I still get to do what I want to do, which is to call for this vote, which I will do after the city attorney says whatever it is he feels compelled to say at this moment. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city attorney’s office recommends that we make an insubstantial correction to the ordinance associated with recommendation 5. Specifically, in that draft ordinance, section 19.18A5, my office recommends that we delete the following phrase, quote, “meeting one of the provisions of section 19.18B2D.” That’s the only change.
Okay, so I’ll move that, Mr. Weezer, second that. So now, Mr. Clerk, we’ve got a, I want to do this where we can maybe just do this in one vote, so we’re going to vote on this. It’s my understanding, and you can stop me if I’m wrong, Mr. Weezer, as amended, that there’s, the request has been made that on 8A, that instead of just sending it to, back to the committee, that we will at least officially make that instruction to do the review and report back to this council in 60 days. So if you’re comfortable with that, Mr. Clerk, why don’t you read what it’s before us now?
Mr. President, that would be the Planning and Land Use Management Committee report, as amended by motion 8A, and also as amended by motion Wesson-Weezer, per the city attorney’s request.
Okay, so with that said, just for the visual, guys, let’s put the signs down, and then when we get the “I” vote, we’re going to put them back up. So let’s put them down, put them down, just a little bit. Okay, Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 “I’s.”
Now, put them up. Congratulations, great work. That’s an urgent forthwith, so this vote on that, we’re going to do urgent forthwith. Members, urgent forthwith, so please, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 “I’s.”
Michael?
Mr. Clerk, item 15, please.
Mr. President, item 15 is before you. We have amending motions A and B that have been circulated.
Excellent. We have speakers on the Q. You’ll have one minute to speak. Melissa Michelson, Trinity Tran, Lori Larimendi, please join us at the center podium. Come on up.
Hello. Hello. My name is Melissa Michelson. I’m an appointed member of the California Democratic Party, appointed by Senate Pro Tem Kevin DeLeón, and I’m an aide of Angelina. But I’m here in my capacity as president of Feel the Burn Democratic Club of Los Angeles County, which passed a resolution to support the efforts of divest L.A. in divesting city taxpayer dollars from Wells Fargo. Whether you affiliate with the Democratic Party, another political party, or have no party preference, divesting from Wells Fargo and any other unscrupulous financial institutions is the responsible and moral thing to do. We want the City of L.A. to use neutral third parties to prescreen, measure, and report on companies through a socially and environmentally conscious lens, and we urge and expect the City to enforce a minimum federal and state CRA ratings of satisfactory in the City’s responsible banking ordinance, including investment banking services. Please vote yes on items 15 and 16. Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon. Divest L.A. thanks the Budget and Finance Committee and the Office of Finance for being receptive to our advocacy regarding the needs of the community within these past nine months. In addition to enforcing a satisfactory CRA rating in the RFP, we urge the City to also enforce a minimum federal and state CRA rating of satisfactory in the RBO. This would require social and environmental accountability from bidders in both their commercial banking and investment banking services, the latter of which is not currently in the RFP. The RBO must apply to environmental, social, and government assessments in a bidder’s investment banking services as critical parts in measuring a bank’s social responsibility performances regarding its performances in the, for the communities to which they serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, honorable councilmembers. My name is Laura Larimendi, Government Relations Director for L.A. County BizFed, a grassroots alliance composed of over 160 alliance composed of over 165 business organizations and associations representing 325,000 employers, employing over 3 million residents throughout the LA County region. As you proceed with this ordinance to continue protecting the city's residents, consumers, and businesses, please keep in mind that there are few institutions with the capacity to manage the volume and complexities of the city's financial needs. Drafting new and overburdens in policies can and will make the process harder and more costly to all participants. Much of the information requested by this ordinance is available on various public websites. Requiredness of disclosure of pending investigations while not defining which specific types of investigation is vague. We're all aware that all investigations take a lot of time and not all result in actions, penalties, nor fine. Clarification is needed from you. Requiring banks to certify compliance with all applicable consumer financial protection laws is problematic. State which specific laws are applicable to certain certification process.
Thank you. Arinian Openald, Sylvia Venegas, Ruth Landeverde.
Hello, here I am again, Arinian Openald of the 8th District. I'm here as a consumer, senior citizen, activist, and voter, asking you to address issues of sales goal in the RBO amendment and banking service RFP. Millions of Americans have been defrauded by banks that use loans and sales goals. I and my family of 25 lost our home where we lived for 65 years with secret loans put on the property. Now the city has the opportunity to finally get it right on establishing real bank accountability with the RBO amendment, which falls short of incorporating protection against predatory sales goal and establishing standards that promote socially responsible banking practice. As our elected officials, you have an obligation to promote integrity and transparency in the banks that do business in the city. We ask that RFP require the banks disclose how their sales goals are structured and implemented. We will then have transparency how the banks provide their products.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sylvia Venegas, Ruth, come on up. Ruth Landeverde, if that's you, come on up. We have Blair Avery and Patrick Smith follow you.
Okay. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ruth Landeverde, and I'm a former bank worker. And I am here with ACE and Committee for Better Banks, pretty much just asking you guys to take into consideration the importance of integrating transparency in the selection process to the city's most lucrative contracts worth billions in order to restore trust in the city's ability to select the bank that best serves the interest of the city and its residents. As a former bank worker from Wells Fargo and Bank of America, I did see some practices that do not favor the community. I worked in Toluca Lake, which is a more affluent city, and there I was told by supervisors to disclose absolutely everything to the customers, then going over to Van Nuys, a less lucrative, they told me to skip over this. So, thank you.
Next speaker.
Sylvia Venegas. I was wrongfully foreclosed by Aquin. Deutsche Bank also wrongfully took money from me and my family. Banks need to stop foreclosures and defrauding families like mine. And the solution, as elected officials, you have an obligation to promote integrity and transparency in the banks that do business with the city of Los Angeles. We are asking that the RBO and the banking service RFP require that banks disclose how their sales goals are used. With this requirement, the city will ensure that there is a transparency on how banks provide their products and services to consumers.
Come on up.
How's it going, guys? My name is Blair. It's been an emotional journey with you guys. It's been about a year, almost a year, that we've been pushing for divestment. And as many of you remember, I went to Standing Rock, and I saw firsthand how our government handles these situations where we peacefully demonstrate and we go against these corporations in an ethical manner. And I remember the feeling of feeling powerless to these institutions, but you guys have definitely restored my faith in this democracy by listening to us, by hearing us out, by, by, you know, I just watched you guys vote on socialist policies, and it's amazing. And thank you guys so much, and I want to hear everybody give them a round of applause because they're awesome.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Patrick Smith. I'm an ACE member. I'm from District 11. I'm here in support of the predatory disclosure ordinance, which require banks that are applying to the city of LA for a banking contract, for them to disclose in the RFP any predatory improprieties benefiting them financially while purposely harming the community for profit. Please vote yes on this bill that will work in conjunction with the RBO to provide the transparency, making it possible for crooked banks like Wells Fargo and Bank of America to be held accountable for profiting by taking advantage of the elderly, students, and the minority community. Thank you.
Thank you. Giselle Mata, Maria Loyah, Lydia Ponse.
Good afternoon. My name's Maria Loyah, and I'm with Committees for Better Banks. First of all, I want to thank you all for taking the leadership and addressing this very important issue. With the scandals that Wells Fargo has had, I think it's important for the city of Los Angeles to demonstrate the leadership that you are demonstrating and ensure that there's transparency in the banking contracts and in how the city deals with the banks. So I'd like to advocate that you include disclosure of sales goals in the RBO and the RFP. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Giselle Mata, organizer for Committee for Better Bank and ACE. And I just want to say thank you for each and every council member that is holding banks accountable this morning, that is looking to change the predatory nature of banks on this community and hold them accountable to identifying and transparency regarding sales goals, which we know allowed Wells Fargo to not only abuse their workforce, workers like Ruth Landeverde, who is speaking out today to address the issues that many of our bank workers are experiencing a lot of pain around these sales goals. And the false narrative from the opposition that no bank would bid on $40 billion worth of contracts is ridiculous. So we want to support you in your effort to hold banks accountable and affect the RFP, affect the RBO in a way that is positive and allows our consumers to understand that this council chamber protects them and allows them to understand what the banks are doing in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Lydia Ponse, American India Movement Co-Assist Director. To divest LA, to defund the extractable industries, RFP, which would be to be responsible for people. Every drop, every gas, every drop of gas and oil constitutes a violence of missing and murdered Indigenous women's breath, their lives taken and stolen. Once a week, there's a woman missing at Standing Rock. There are 36 women currently missing in North Dakota. Turtle Island suffers every loss of our sisters from Canada, Mexico, and US, and all over globally where these man camps employ kidnappers, rapists, and killers and contribute to human trafficking. We have a responsibility here, not just because of the missing and murdered Indigenous women, but the privately owned prisons that are funded by these banking institutions. And sadly enough, we know how they contribute to gentrification because they redline our communities at the same time, invest in redeveloping our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler.
Yes, thank you so much, the Affordable Banking. Wells Fargo's been engaging in criminal behavior, which is good for the council. Let's give Wells Fargo a hand for learning from Herb Wesson how to be a criminal. Thank you. But today, we're going to stop the bullshit from Wells Fargo. Now, when you walk into Wells Fargo, you will be treated kindly without 20% interest loans.
What about that credit card they just approved?
Oh, yes, yes, that's right. I need to revise my remarks. I'm very sorry. It turns out Wells Fargo just gave us another $50,000 unsecured line of credit. We're lobbying today for Wells Fargo. We love you, Wells Fargo. Yes, and we got paid off by Wells Fargo. We support you. We love you, Wells Fargo. Sorry. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers for item number 15. Councilmember Martinez.
Mr. President, I believe you already spoke on this item, and we've taken all the cards. Yes, you did. Mr. President, before we took up the multiple speaker cards, I announced that we would take comment on 15 for anybody who wanted to do it, and I believe you spoke about the linkage fee, in fact.
So we'll ask you both to take a seat, and--
I mean, on Mr. 15.
We'll ask you both to take a seat. Mr. Spindler, please sit down. Can we clear the aisle? And we'll, and Ms. Martinez has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Martinez.
It's nice to see you in the chair. When Mr. Kocorian and Mr. Corretts first proposed this motion, I was happy to second it because I felt that this issue was very, very dear, near to my heart. But frankly, it was basically out of frustration with the irresponsible legal practices in some of the financial industry and how it hit close to home. When you look back at the foreclosures and you look back at what we're seeing now with the Wells Fargo scandal, I can't help but to think that ground zero are neighborhoods like the neighborhoods in my district. Neighborhoods in the city of Los Angeles that are our constituents, the most vulnerable communities of color, low-income communities, immigrant communities, single moms who are just trying to stay ahead. And it makes me so angry to think that the most vulnerable of people, the most honest, hard-working people of our city are being preyed on and targeted by financial industry, by the financial industry with absolutely zero regard for them as people. And it makes me angry that the banking industry doesn't see our people as customers. They see them as a commodity, a commodity that squeezes every single penny through their crappy loans and their charging of unnecessary fees, their fraudulent opening of accounts without even knowing their names or even people knowing that they have signed up for this. And it makes me furious because it makes me think of the time that I was 10 years old, growing up in Pacoima. My parents had bought a home, and I had to sit there and interpret legal documents for my parents who didn't speak no English or very little English. As a 10-year-old, being terrified of these documents and not understanding what the bank was asking of my parents was terrifying. And I know a lot of my constituents are in the same exact position, that because they speak very little English or don't speak English at all, they're being preyed upon every single day by these financial institutions, and it really, really upsets me. Because I can still see some of our constituents not understanding or being given the runaround or being, getting things, making things complicated for them so that they can become targets over and over again. Members, I know that we're not a regulatory agency, and I know that the city needs practical needs, has practical needs to deal with the banking services, but heaven forbid that we don't leverage our position and demand better for who we do business with. It's an absolute responsibility of ours to be able to do that. Mr. Kocorian, I just want to say thank you, sir. Thank you and your staff for giving this matter your full consideration, for having multiple committee meetings on this issue, and for listening to some of the arguments I met in the letter that was sent to your committee. Thank you very much for honoring our request. I appreciate you and your staff. Thank you so much. And along with my colleagues, Councilmember Corretts and Bonin, and thank you very much for also, for the amending motion that we have introduced today. While we have a fiduciary responsibility as a legislative body, and while the city of Los Angeles is not a regulatory agency, I still believe that we can take an additional steps to emphasize our commitment to social responsibility and banking responsibility. We cannot govern the banking industry, but we can foster a better environment of transparency and accountability for who we do business with. This motion before you members requests that the city attorney amend the responsible banking ordinance to further require the disclosure of the use of sale goals. I would also like to urge the city attorney to promptly make the amendments to the ordinance and to ensure that the timely application for the respondents of the banking service RFP. Mr. Kocorian, thank you once again for your leadership on this matter, and I want to also thank Claire Bartel, Todd Booney, Natalie Braille, and the other city staff for making sure that you stuck with us and find a way to move forward. Colleagues, I ask you to support the amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts.
I don't know what to say after that. I think Ms. Martinez covered just about everything and incredibly well. We all realize that banks have done such bad things that we couldn't have written it if it were fiction or imagined that companies would be creating phony bank accounts and checking accounts and making phony loans and doing all kinds of things without even letting the customer know. It's so evil that I don't think any of us could have imagined it. So we obviously need to address it all. I have a motion that is a modest addition, 15B. Under the ordinance that we're looking at, there's clause number four that requests the city attorney to determine whether or not forcing disclosure of sales goals would put us in a position of being a regulator, which may not pass legal muster. So this also provides an alternative and requests the city attorney prepare and present an ordinance to amend the responsible banking ordinance to establish a policy that any bidder who voluntarily discusses, discloses the structure of their sales goal strategy for consumer products irrespective of its proprietary nature shall be awarded extra points for voluntarily disclosing on an RFP score. So if we're not able to possibly regulate, then we have a different way. We're not forcing them to do it, but we would be incentivizing them to do it. So hopefully, we look at both of those, and whichever passes legal muster, we move that forward. But we have to have some way to differentiate the banks that have had truly terrible practices, and if they're continuing to have those practices, we need to know.
Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank Ms. Martinez and Mr. Corretts for the proposed amendments. It asks that we proceed today with the vote with accepting the amendments contained in 15A. And I want to thank Mr. Corretts for the thoughtful consideration about potential legal issues with regard to 15B, if we can consider that further in budget and finance, and then come back with the appropriate reports after we've had an opportunity to consider that, if that's acceptable, Mr. Corretts. I think that would be the best way to move forward so that we can go ahead and vote today on the matter as amended by 15A.
Okay. All right. So let's, 15B then will be referred to committee. Well, now, Mr. Clerk, we'll vote on what's remaining. No, we won't. Tamara Case, please come speak.
Good day, council. I'd like to honor the fact that we're here on Tongva Lan, honor our ancestors, and to our relations, our relatives. I'd like to remind the council that you have a moral and ethical responsibility here to the people and the planet, and it's beyond me how the city can even consider doing business with this bank that has fraudulent business practices and forced people out of their homes, that have extractive industries, that oil industry is-- that have extractive industries, that oil industry is protecting on indigenous land, sacred land. You had five different military, how you say, military departments occupying Standing Rock. You had the Morton County Police. You had the FBI. You had the BIA. You had the National Guard. Just to remind you, this is a...
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That's approved.
All right, Mr. President and everybody, hello. Listen now, about this affordable housing, there is affordable housing. Remember yesterday I gave you the LAUSD breakdown of who's in our schools? Eighty percent of the students in our schools are the kids of illegal aliens. Now, those children have families, and they're living in the affordable housing. We've got plenty of affordable housing. Now, you opened up the Section 8 gates the other day. I was at the library where they were teaching the illegals who couldn't speak a word of English how to fill out the application to get on the Section 8 list. That's who's living in affordable housing. We need to write Washington, DC, and have a law passed where if you are not a citizen of this country, you cannot live in affordable housing. Now, a couple of years ago, HUD penalized Los Angeles because you were not spending the money for affordable housing. I was in the meeting. I got the paperwork. You did not spend the money for the affordable housing at the end of that year, and HUD penalized you. You guys are not spending the money. The money is there. Now, if you go on the web and you type in how much money illegals in America send to Mexico, wired, wired to Mexico every year, you'll see that last year, they wired 27 billion. The year before, they had 25 billion. These illegals are wiring billions of dollars out of here, draining this nation every year.
Okay, move on to another item now.
Now, item number six. This is the racket about, I say the mob and the politicians, about this marijuana. This marijuana, you're selling for cash. That's dangerous. And I had someone tell me that these dispensaries, they get robbed. People can get shot and killed. You're dealing with cash here. And then who's going to be selling it? You hire these people who were busted on marijuana charges to sell it. You don't care if they get shot in the head. Now, why do we need all these fees? Because you're not getting the money from the illegals. They're draining the country. So you guys got to make the money somewhere. So you've got all these kinds of fees, marijuana fees, the fees of developers. That's going to discourage developers from building, all these fees. Now, here's another thing. All these housing units, you want to build 59 units at 3200 West Temple. Every housing unit you build will be lived in by illegal aliens. That area, those are Mexicans and Asians, illegal aliens. Everywhere you develop in this city, they're illegal aliens. They don't have to be citizens to get in these housing units. I don't care if you build from today to 10 years from now, as long as we have these illegal aliens living in them, Americans will be on the street. They'll be living on the street. They'll be living in shelters with relatives. Now, about these transgenders, I don't know if you heard about it, or I read about it.
We've already voted on that item, Mr. President.
Excuse me, but that's one of the items I get there.
No, 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 but it's already been dispensed with. So just go to another item. You have several. Go ahead.
Okay, we got one about the illegal aliens getting welfare in these social services agencies. Illegal aliens work in them, and they make sure they give the housing to other illegal aliens.
Give her one minute.
Now, my public comment, my public comment is about...
Well, would you, Ms., just relax. Give her her one minute. Now, go ahead.
Thank you. My public comment's about this transgender. I don't know if you read about it, but the transgender man, forgot he was a transgender, and he raped a 10-year-old girl. In these shelters, don't put those transgender men with the women. They're going in the showers with penises and erections and everything else. We got rapists. Anybody can put on some lipstick and a dress. I walked in the library in Hollywood, opened the door, a man was in the mirror with men's clothes on, told me, looked me in the face and said, "Ma'am, come on in. I'm transgender." I said to myself, "You're a liar." I walked out and got the librarian. Me and the librarian went back in there. He was coming out, and he told me, he said, "BITCA did not tell you I was a transgender." He said, "I'll cut you." And I saw him go in his jacket pocket with a knife. I jumped back. Another man walked up and threw him out of the library. If you want to deal with these trans, build their own facilities. And you know you can't do that because they'll be in there having sex. So I don't know what to do with them, but keep them away from us. Many of them are frauds and not transgenders. They're pedophiles and rapists, okay? So I don't think against them, but don't pull them off on us. Don't put them on us, okay? Take them somewhere, Mars somewhere.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Spindler, it's my understanding he's already spoken on a minute, so he's got two minutes and then his general public comment. Mr. Spindler, you have items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 30, 31, and 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, A, B, C, 37, 8, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 43B, 43C, 43D, all the way to 43H. You know what? Before I let him speak, Mr. City Attorney, what I'm going to do, they sign up for all these items, I'm going to start counting that against their time by having to read off all of these things. So anyway, Mr. Spindler, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's good. He can violate more laws and get sued for more money.
You're already off the subject. You want to leave, Mr. Spindler? You're disrupting the meeting. You're off the subject. Mr. Spindler, on topic.
I'm talking to...
Now, Mr. Spindler, do it one more time.
Telling the pig to stay on topic. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So again, CD 3, no lean. We urge you as a matter of Hanukkah, and again, we urge you with our new ally, Marquis Herederson, who's sitting here supporting us, no on all the leans for Christmas. Ho, ho, ho! Yes, get rid of the leans. And also, item three for the lighting district. Oh, that's in CD 6. Ne, 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 Neury.
No lighting district? No lighting district. Sherman Way and Van Nuys Boulevard, drug activity? Yes. Prostitution? Yes. Need for lighting? Most definitely. I've received a number of texts by all the drug dealers in the area. They support emphatically. Item number three. Thank you for Neury Martinez supporting the drug and the prostitution trade in CD 6. Item four, go ahead.
Number four, CD 15? That's by Joe Buscagino, the police officer. Yes, he needs to see who he's beating. We support for.
Number five.
Griffith Park? Yes, Griffith Park, CD 13. When they, they have a lot of sex in the park, and they need to have lighting for safe, affordable sex and drug dealing and prescription pill sales. We fully support emphatically. Item number five, yes. So that's about it on this sheet, yes.
Okay, give him his one minute for general public comment.
So again, we're going to start taking my time for you to read the agenda items I spoke on. That is a violation of 54950, and it's a violation of the Bain Act, Civil Code, Section 52.1, because you're discriminating against me for signing up for more than one item. So I will add that to the claim. I will file that on Monday as an additional claim. The federal judge, I filed my amendment. I had till November the 20th. I filed my 116-page first amended complaint against you, Mr. Wesson, against your attorney, Hugo Rosser, and your two lovely detectives, Eric Reed and Nelly Navarro Mercado, that falsely arrested me, defamed me, slandered me, and I'm going to add false light, I'm going to add defamation, I'm going to add false imprisonment, and I'm going to seek punitive damages against Mike Fuer as well. Happy fucking Christmas.
Same to you, Mr. Spindler. Okay, who's, in fact, before we call up the next speaker, Mr. Clerk, let's vote on items 2 through 6. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Let's now vote on items 30 through 34 and item 37. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, Ms. Autry, item 7, 35, 38, 41, 42, in general public comment. Ms. Autry, please come forward.
Well, first, I wanted to say I'm so glad for the affordable housing so long overdue displacing black people, people of color, people that you consider undesirable, so that we're then vulnerable not only to police brutality, the sex trafficking, the sex slavery, those black people are used as DNA guinea pigs for implants.
If you get back on topic, Ms. Autry.
Well, this is including in the general public comment.
No, I gave you the items that you could speak on. When we get to your general public comment, you can speak on that.
I thought you mentioned that. Okay, you mentioned 35, 34. I thought this was included.
No, you go ahead.
Okay.
7, 35, 38, 41, 42. You can start with those.
Okay, regarding 7, again, that was for affordable housing. We need more affordable housing and regentrification. I know the plans that you have in rezoning for the row, do not displace the black people, the people of color veterans. We need affordable housing, not more micro lofts and condominiums. You've sold us out. This is still a democracy, not an aristocracy. We're not going to be shipped out to San Marino Valley or Orange County. I live here. I don't expect to be continually harassed by Isaac Shomoff or the Mexican Maintenance Mafia men that he sends to sexually harass me, okay? Illegally entering my room.
And again, I believe we're off topic, Mr. President.
We need affordable housing. We will not be coerced into moving out where we have every right.
Why don't you jump on items 35 or 38 right now, Ms. Autry?
Right, so no, that's not going to be covered up in the attacks on people that are still availing themselves of that opportunity. So for 35, that was regarding, just a moment, that was regarding 34, 35. That was regarding the technical, yeah, for the monies, just for the coming year, I'm going to be concise in this. The money has got to be used, again, for housing, for women, security. This has got to be used for children. Do not finance further police state. We need to have the monies for safe spots and refuge for women that are fleeing sex trafficking and sex slavery. We need to have the monies reinvested into the public school system. Do not create for...
Get back on topic, Ms. Autry.
Well, this is, and environment, I think that one of the items about the environment. Would you not need construction?
You've got items 41 and 42.
Right, construction of affordable housing, not on toxic land, so we're not suffering environmental genocide. For, you know, many of the people of color, black people and Hispanic people, our buildings are constructed in toxic areas, okay? So notwithstanding the attacks by those, the regentrifiers are suffering environmental genocide due to toxic air and water. Not to mention, you know, there are roaming vampires, cannibals, pedophiles, homosexuals, sex predators, seeking to misuse us.
Okay, let me stop you now. We'll give you your one minute.
We need this equanimity for all.
Ms. Autry, wait. Now you have your one minute for your general public comment. Go ahead.
Negroes, or those of you that are honorary white, we need affordable housing, and we need that equanimity and parity for all Americans. You're giving it to the Hispanic people, okay? What about the black people? I'd like to have 40 acres of a mule, not in a tent on Skid Row, okay? Not on San Pedro. I'd like that equity right now.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Herman, we have items 1 and 7, 35, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, in your general public comment.
So I oppose all leans, and I demand that they all be waived and held for another day due to the holidays. Thank you. In addition to item 35, accompanying ordinance, November 27, does it apply to the Bain Act? What is the Bain Act? A non-represented classification of examining civil services? That's in question. Now, how do we adopt an ordinance dated from November 27, 2017? As I read for the record, Mr. Monopoly Man? No, Keebler, I'm on page 21, fool. Then I go into item 38, communication from the Department of Animal Service. Woof, woof, woof! Now that I and my service dog demand reasonable accommodations for the record, I want the city attorney to stop the enforcement against cruelty to all animals. Stop, stop killing animals. Daniel Gus is right for the record. City watch in regards to the society of preventing animals' cruelty is because Herman Jason Wesson, aka Herb, has allowed it along with Mayor Eric Garcetti. So I fear for my dog's life every time I come to this meeting because savages demand $200,000 for animal welfare trust fund, whatever the fuck that means, and the DAS report that there will be no financial impact on this budget. Bullshit. Ask Daniel Gus for the record. Then I go into item number 40 regarding, woo, woo, funding for completion of Griffith Park traffic.
No, you got to go to, I don't have 40. 41. Try 41, Mr. Herman.
Fine, I'm denied public comment. Relative to amending prior console for CD 1 regarding the American Disability Act, Mr. Sadio, I want you to know that affordable housing doesn't act on my favor. It never has, it never will. Anyone in Los Angeles who's homeless, anyone suffering from disabilities like Mr. Sadio's wife deserves more.
Stay on the topic.
Because when dealing with housing, it impacts the adverse atrocities against people who are homeless and need affordable housing under HHH, bitch, bitch, bitch.
Stay on the subject.
Which is Assembly Bill 1618 for the record. Fuck you, Kevin DeLeon. Now my general public comment, I demand that Jose Wezor be removed and be fired from his positions for all the accusations of women abuse. Sexual misconduct will not be tolerated in my House of Legislation. The Ralph M. Brown Act protects me from people who pay for sex, Jose Wezor, stops people from, you, Ms. Martinez, for allowing it to happen. Your both colleagues from the LAUSD, the largest pedophilers in the world. You can read every account of sexual abuse towards children, and not one fucking thing done. So I demand that Jose Wezor resign. Resign, Wezor, and stop having your class of bitches coming to work in tight clothing and sexually harassing my fucking mind. 42 U.S.C., 1983.
Stop, stop. Go ahead, Ms. Martinez.
No one should be commenting on what women wear in this building, especially those who work in our offices. I suggest, Mr. City Attorney, this is not the first time that Mr. Herman makes these derogatory comments about our bodies, what we wear, to our citizens.
No, you know what? Wait, Ms. Martinez.
You did it in committee last week, and I will not tolerate it anymore. You have no right to comment on what women are wearing.
No, Mr. Sergeant.
So, Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to ask...
I want Mr. Herman removed. He's been asked...
He is not allowed to talk about our bodies or what we wear.
No, no, and he's disrupting the meeting.
I have you on the record in my committee, talking about, explicitly talking about our body, our body parts, and what we choose to wear to work. Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to ask you...
I want him removed if he...
And he's shouting in front of the pews and refusing to leave.
I want him removed right now.
No, you have no right to sexually harass us.
And he's continuing to shout as he leaves. And he's shouting in vulgarities as he leaves the room.
Mr. City Attorney, Mr. President, I want to make a request of the city attorney. I request that you find the legal rights to defend us, the women in this building, from these predators that come here and talk about our bodies and what we wear to work.
So I want to officially put that on the record that we have members of this council, female members in particular, that feel that they're being harassed from a... female members in particular, that feel that they're being harassed from a sexual perspective by Mr. Herman and others, and there is a request that we come up with a legal way to deal with that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Do you have that, Mr. City Attorney? Leah, items forty-three, A, B, C, D, E, and Leah, I'm gonna tell you in advance, stay on the topic. So you have forty-three, all the way up to forty-three H, and then you have general public comment.
I'd like to address Maps of number forty-three. I found a pattern in practice with the City of Los Angeles altering, corruptly altering maps. So let the record stand that the City of Los Angeles has a longstanding pattern, I found it all the way back to about seventy-eight, where they corruptly altered maps, or they deleted them, or removed them. What's my next number you'd like me to go on to, President Wesson?
You have, you have items, all you have is item forty-three, but you have, you have items A all the way through H, I believe.
Okay, so I'm gonna do eight next. I'm very concerned that I-
No, H, eight, you have forty-three, A through H. So the only card that I have for you is on item forty-three.
So can I do eight because you didn't call my name?
So give her some more time. Could, could we give her?
Can I address eight?
No, you didn't fill out.
I did, I did.
No, I don't have, I do not have that.
There's a pattern of that, so why?
No, 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 there's, whatever the computer says is what I say. I have no problem with you guys speaking. Just speak to what you signed up to speak on, which is today, item forty-three, A through H. So all of your conversation today, other than your public comment, should pertain to the approval of Maps.
I just answered Maps.
Okay, let's give her her general public comment.
You're denying me my eight.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna do public comment. I would like to address what Nuri Martinez said about women being discriminated against. I've come before you for five years. Five years and three months, I filed a complaint, and you denied me, and you've hardened me beyond belief as a woman, a single property owner, female, the first member in her family to own a piece of property, and you've talked everything you can to sit here and watch me suffer. You have watched the trauma. You have watched Mike Bonin lie and deceive you, and you know what you've done? You've denied me not once, not Mr. Coretts, not Mr. Krikorian, not Nuri Martinez, not O'Farrell, not Price, not Rodriguez, not the city attorney, not the mayor, not you, President Wesson, not Bonin, not Blumenfield, not Sadio, not Biscano, not Isla, not Harris Dawson or Wezor, not one of you ever came up to me in five years.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. No, no, your time has expired now, so thank you. Your time has expired. Your ti, please, Leah, your time is expired, is, has expired, and you're disrupting the meeting. Okay, now let's vote on items thirty-five and thirty, thirty-five and thirty-six. On items thirty-five and thirty-six, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
We could also vote on items one and seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. I'm gonna go to general public comment for a while. Donovan Carver, Donovan Carver, Lydia Ponse, Brian Barajas, Rob Quan, Labani Haug, Neff Rogers. Yes, ma'am.
Lydia Ponse, American India Movement, SoCal. Everything that has been said before you, there has to be consideration at the end of the year and the beginning of a new to reflect on being better relatives, because some of the behavior here is just not indicative of healthy communication, and I'm not for it, because it crushes the spirit when we're not communicating in a healthy way. And I stand with Ms. Martinez in the deplorable things that have been said, just merely for that, I, I, about what we wear and our body parts. There's enough of that, and I think that we should actually come back to council next year and consider a community oversight for every single appointee that the mayor has for commissions, for committees, because without us, this is gonna kind of continue. It's kind of a circus at some point, and I want to participate in healthy dialogue. Thank you, happy holidays.
Thank you, same to you and good to see you. Next speaker, please. Your name?
Labani Haug, on behalf of Asian Americans Advancing Justice. Councilmember, thank you so much for having us here today. I'm here to speak on item number sixty-five, which is the CVE agenda item, which asks the city council to approve the mayor's office's federal CVE grant. As, I was actually here last week discussing this issue in connection with the Sanctuary City Ordinance, and I asked there, and I asked again, that this council oppose approving any form of CVE program in the city. As I mentioned last week, CVE is a, is a program that we believe is fundamentally Islamophobic in that it targets Muslim communities for heightened scrutiny. It's a program that has not been proved to be effective. There is no evidence that it actually is effective in curbing radicalization, let alone actions that lead to terrorist activities. And finally, it chills First Amendment speech.
Thank you.
We ask, we appreciate that you-
Thank you. Next speaker, thank you. Your time's expired, ma'am. Next speaker. Everybody gets the same amount. Yes, ma'am. Your name?
My name is Neffertidi Rogers. I'm here on behalf of MSA West. We're an umbrella organization for different MSAs across the West Coast. I'm also here to speak about agenda item sixty-five. CVE program reinforces the erroneous narrative that Muslims are security threats, as well as creates a climate of fear through surveillance, especially among Muslim youth. Not only does this CVE framework disproportionately focus on Muslims, it targets black and brown communities and functions to further criminalize and villainize these communities. This framework reminds of, reminds us of actions like Co-Tel Pro that have been used to undermine self-determination and self-identity of these communities. Furthermore, the CVE framework is rooted in the flawed radicalization theory, which claims that there is a fixed trajectory to radical, to radicalization, with indicators that if detected early on can be interrupted through intervention. Examples of indicators used in this theory include growing beards, increasing involvement in social activism, praying five times a day, and wearing Islamic clothing. These so-called signs of radicalization discourage Muslims from practicing their faith and creates a sense of paranoia in the community.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come and identify yourself. If I've called your name, come to Brian, I see you. Come on, Brian, if you're gonna speak.
Well, it's a good ear. I'm calling on all Americans to stop the coup d'etat on Donald Trump. The very elements that have murdered humanity in Bush and Obama, destroying countries, are now after a good American president. What I'm saying is the following. I've been coming here for years, destroying the British Empire, and that includes Wall Street and the drug cartels. The policy that are needed, it's absolutely Lyndon LaRouche's aspect, which, by the way, China has adopted, which, by the way, they have uplifted eight-hundred million people out of poverty. That model is in this book, which we present to the world. If anybody wants to destroy this empire, you join LaRouche. Anything less, you're not human.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come and identify yourself. Your name?
Donovan Cave.
What? I didn't hear it.
Sixty-five. It's been deferred.
No, no, your name?
Oh, Donovan Cave.
Okay, okay. Gotcha.
So I just want to speak on item sixty-five that was deferred. I'm very, I'm very, I'm questioning the integrity of what's going on with item sixty-five, especially considering the recent events in Charlottesville and what's going on in this country presently. I'm, I'm opposed to it based on the, basis on the fact that we've seen Trump actually defund organizations that were previously meant to counter white supremacy, namely Life After Hate, and also, can't see the other one, but namely, Life After Hate, which was actually supposed to counter the white radical elements within our country and our society. I'm very, very concerned about how the Department of Homeland Security and the CVE program is gonna align with these organizations that want to get it passed, and we really should question how it's gonna affect the impact of, of this country going forward.
Okay, just so you know that, sir, and everybody else, that item was not voted on today. It was referred to committee, so it will be heard there as well. So come forward, identify yourself.
My name is Celine. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Palestinian Youth Movement, Los Angeles, on item sixty-five. PYM strongly condemns any acceptance of CVE grant money. We work with a large Arab and Arab-Muslim community, including incoming refugee communities all over Southern California, and the safety, well-being, and religious and political freedom of our loved ones is our primary concern. CVE comes with a series of conditions, stipulations, and tools of surveillance that work towards isolating our communities based on racist, stereotypical, and politically motivated techniques. CVE criminalizes our religious practices and our freedom of speech and expression, and chains its acceptors into reporting and criminalizing any expression of political activity, which is a violation of our civil rights and religious freedoms. CVE implies that our own communities, Muslim, black, and brown communities themselves are the risk. This discriminatory grant will put our communities, including incoming refugee communities, in an unnecessarily vulnerable position. Because CVE allows for the criminalization of a dangerously vague and broad spectrum-
Thank you. Next speaker, please come identify yourself. I think that's Rob. Yes, sir.
Rob Quan, speaking on item sixty-five, I want to thank whichever council member ensured that that got sent back to committee so we could really discuss this fully. On the surface, it sounds like a really commonsensical venture, but I'd highlight a recent FOIA request that revealed the FBI described CVE as a means of strengthening its investigative and intelligence gathering abilities, and this was despite the Obama administration's claims otherwise. This, this concern is compounded by the Trump administration. As mentioned before, they've cut CVE funds to fight neo-Nazis and white supremacists, and just two months ago, an FBI report was leaked which describes black identity extremist movements, and deemed them a violent threat, claiming black grievances about racialized police violence and inequities in our criminal justice system have spurred retaliatory violence. As you can see, this is a big concern, because are we gonna see women's identity extremists next? Are we gonna see immigrant identity extremists next? I want to see the council fully discuss this matter in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Now you have to, did I call your name? Did I call your name? Because I don't, I don't need you to just get in the aisles until I call your name. So I'm looking for Grace Gilbert, Grace Gilbert, and is it Keisha Hunley? Juanman Williams? I'll call everybody, but when I call your name, come on up. Is it Lamba?
Good afternoon.
Yes.
My name is Lamban Najib, and I'm with Asian Americans Advancing Justice, Los Angeles, and I'm here to discuss CVE. The CVE program stigmatizes the Muslim community, furthering Islamophobia in our society. This focus on American Muslims alienates them from the rest of the American society. Mayor Garcetti's office claims that the CVE programs are community-based and community-driven, but the drivers of this program are the DHS, DOJ, and law enforcement. This prominent role of law enforcement raises the troubling prospect that the programs will serve as a conduit for surveillance and intelligence gathering. As a member of the Muslim community, we were not consulted, and I'm here to say that our community opposes the CVE program and urge the city council to hear our voices. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm also looking for Michael Novak, is it Yusra Kafaji? And I called Grace Gilbert, Blair Avery, Joseph Williams. Identify yourself, sir.
My name is Juanman Williams, Joseph Williams. I am a member of Black Lives Matter, Los Angeles. So as other folks have, have recently brought up, the FBI recently, memo was leaked identifying black identity extremists as one of the main threats that they're worried about moving forward, right? We're here to talk about, I'm here to talk about public, item number sixty-five, CVE, a program called Countering Violent Extremism, which if you use the government's own language, they're literally talking about countering, like, like folks said, the activism that's taking place in black and Muslim and brown communities to make the society a better place. UTLA passed a resolution against CVE over a year ago, in December twenty sixteen. They've been doing a lot of work to try to decriminalize our schools, get LAPD out of our schools, stop criminalizing black, black and brown and Muslim youth, and this is gonna do a lot to reverse that. This is gonna do a lot to put more surveillance, more criminalization, more resources into putting, funneling black and brown youth and Muslim youth from the schools straight to the prison system. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Richard, you'll be up next. Richard, after, Ms., you're, you're up now, he's after you. Your name?
Yusra.
Yes.
From the Council on American Islamic Relations. So the sanctuary bill that was passed last week stated that the City of Los Angeles should refuse to participate in any way, in any policies or programs that purpose or effect is to target Muslim communities for heightened security, including CVE, and any related programs. So I'm asking that the council stick to that promise. The sanctuary bill also states that the reasons why CVE is problematic. First, it targets Muslim community and stigmatizes them as inherently suspect. In other words, they are guilty until proven innocent. Second, it is based on debunked radicalization theories that provide no evidence that the CVE framework actually works. And third, CVE underlies ties to law enforcement and make it ineffective for community engagement tool. I'm asking that we, that you don't support CVE, that you don't accept the funds from the federal government, from the federal government. Thank you.
Okay, Richard, and then I'm looking for Daniel, Daniel Carney. Yeah, are you here? Okay. Keisha Hunley, Michael Novak, Joseph Williams, Joe Jimenez. Go on, Richard.
Mr. President, members, news reporting is focusing a lot of public attention on gentrification. Gentrification is forcing poor people to the streets because hotel rates are too high. Sir, because gentrification attracts hotel owners to the conversion of inexpensive rooms to expensive lofts, people are being forced to the streets. So thousands are forced into rescue missions, tents and cardboard boxes in Skid Row as winter approaches. However, at Fifth and Main in downtown, the Million Dollar Hotel stands as a potential fifteen-hundred rooms leveraged to provide a community awareness and treatment service similar to that started by Willie Brown in San Francisco with an ancillary mobile assistance patrol, an integral part of burgeoning Skid Row pit. Thank you.
Yes, sir, please come forward and state your name.
My name is Daniel. I'm here to support, first of all, claims that have been made by people who are coming here concerned about CVE, countering violent extremism, which, as it currently stands, is a project of surveillance, creates distrust in the Muslim community. I'm also coming here as a representative of Jewish Voice for Peace, which stands against countering violent extremism and stands in solidarity with students at UCLA and other places that are trying to create safer spaces for Muslims. I also wanted to provide a little context for CVE and quote a little bit from a public statement that was made by CARE. CVE programs are certainly bound to fail unless the government ends abusive counterterrorism practices that fuel distrust in law enforcement generally. Specifically, the mutual trust and respect for rights that ought to form the basis for community policing of any kind have been jeopardized, if not completely extinguished, by the FBI's practice of pressuring law-abiding American Muslims to become informants against their own communities, often in coercive circumstances.
Thank you. Do we have Yoaz Otzman or Otzman? Again, last call for Grace Gilbert, Michael Novak. Let's vote on items thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item forty-two. So I think I have cards on forty-two. Christine, Christine Rango, Oliver, Olivia Lee, Jessica. I didn't see you all the way in the back. Jared Wright? Go ahead. Floor is yours.
Good morning, members of the city council, city president, city council president. My name is Christine Rangel. I'm here to speak from the Building Industry Association, and we are speaking today in support of, excuse me, Councilman Gil Sadio's motion. We would desperately like to build workforce housing in the City of LA. Unfortunately, the reason that those projects are not being produced right now is because we can't afford to produce them. So we are asking all the council to support Councilman Sadio's motion so that we can build this badly needed housing for our teachers, nurses, first responders, firemen, policemen. Please work with us to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down and... Please identify yourself.
Olivia Lee.
You broke it. First day here, and you broke it.
Sorry.
Spindler? Mr. Spindler, you're disrupting the meeting. Cut it out. It's not your time. It's her time. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Olivia Lee with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce here in support of the motion. While the business community strongly supports affordable housing, we've advocated against the linkage fee that was just passed because it would make middle-class housing more expensive to build, buy, or rent. The motion before you could lessen the detrimental impact of a linkage fee on middle-income housing. This exemption would incentivize the construction of housing designed for middle-income Angelinos who are finding our city more unaffordable as a place to live and raise their families. Without this exemption, the linkage fee would add $12,000, $24,000 per door to the cost of building middle-class housing. We can agree that we need more affordable housing, but we have a housing supply crisis at all levels, and we need solutions to increase production overall. A UC Berkeley poll found that 56% of California voters considered moving out of the state for more affordable, 56% moving to find a more affordable home, 25% considering moving out of the state. So with that, we please urge you to vote for this motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So let's vote on this item, 42. Let's open the... Mr. Sadio, we're good. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Now let's vote on items 40 and 43. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Do we have Michelle Rubio? Michelle Rubio, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Rubio of the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council, Area 4 resident. On January 19th of this year, Gil Sadio, Councilman for CD1, contacted the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council, telling us that the RFQP for development of five parking lots in Lincoln Heights needed meaningful community engagement before proceeding. Since then, there has been little said at our council meetings, nothing has been presented to our planning and land use committee, and there has been very little in the press that indicated this vote would be happening today. There definitely is a housing crisis, and we'd like to be a part of solving it. We applaud the citizens of Los Angeles for voting on Proposition HHH to provide relief in the form of 100,000 units of housing that we currently desperately need. We would like this development to be a model of community engagement, market forces, excellent construction, and a vision that will result in bringing the housing crisis within manageable terms. However, we cannot fail to notice that the promised new process has not been determined, and that the Neighborhood Council of Lincoln Heights has not been contacted at all, even after we've written letters asking about the status. We want to take our fair share. Can I have one more, ma'am, please?
No. No, you could finish your sentence, though.
Okay. We want to take our fair share of the load and are sincerely hoping to be part of the process, but when notice is given, a vote, and the neighborhood has not been engaged, it looks like an unfair process to us.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, sergeants. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney or Clerk, we have a special one by Mr. Coretz.
Mr. President, we should first vote on the findings. I believe Mr. Coretz is going to speak to them.
Do you want me to?
No, Mr. Spindler, you didn't get there in enough time. Go ahead, Mr. Coretz. We have to vote what now?
Yeah, so the first thing we'll do is I'll recite the...
Let's open the... You have to read... Go ahead, Steph.
Yeah. I'm going to recite the findings as reported to me by the council member who made the motion, Mr. Coretz. Then we'll vote on that under the government code. Following that, we'll then take up the item, have any report, take public comment, and then we'll be done. So as I understand it, LA Fire Department, earlier today, or last night, after the posting of the agenda, reported that the Skirball fire was caused by a cooking in a homeless encampment. It is essential that the city council receive a report on the nature of the fire and appropriate actions in light of it.
Okay.
So we should vote on the findings under the government code.
Okay, we'll vote on the findings. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes, one no.
Okay, Mr. Coretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I've introduced a Rule 23 emergency motion asking for immediate action in result of the catastrophic, catastrophic Skirball fires that we battled last week in my district. The fires destroyed six homes and damaged several others before being contained, and I spent a couple days at the command center helping evacuate hundreds of people and providing information over social media and regular media and a number of other activities. What we've been told most recently indicates that the fire was started at a homeless encampment hidden by ridges and foliage from view. And so it is believed that this property was not only not visible to anyone, but was also not a property controlled by the City of Los Angeles, which raises a number of issues. Obviously, this must not be allowed to happen again in a city where so many residents live in high fire zones and with the possibility that catastrophic fire conditions are the new normal, as our governor has mentioned. We obviously need to act now, and we need to create an emergency hillside fire task force to be the eyes and ears of all potential fire dangers, and that is why I'm introducing a motion requesting the establishment of an emergency hillside fire protection plan. I'm requesting an immediate response to this matter from the Fire Department and all impacted responsible government agencies, including LAPD, LSA, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and Caltrans, among others, to report on this specific homeless encampment where the Skirball fire was started, including whether the homeless individuals in this camp were trespassing on land not open to the public. Also, we need to identify encampments in very high fire zones and implement actions to prevent individuals from trespassing. We need to identify the kind of signage. We need to warn of trespassing and enable our city agencies to promptly and successfully enforce this, both on public and private property. And third, I am requesting a report on creating an MOU with all of our neighboring government jurisdictions to enable regular, efficient brush clearance in these areas and to implement enhanced enforcement of laws related to trespassing, illegal fires, and campsites, especially in the hillsides prior to days of elevated fire danger. We need to move quickly on this, and I ask your eye vote.
Mr. Bonner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Coretz for this. As most of you know, our districts are adjacent to each other, and the Skirball fire was literally just inches from my district, and were it not for the great work of our first responders, it would have spread into the 11th and taken out many more homes and lives. I support this motion, and I was glad to second it. It is vitally important that we not have encampments or fires in the high fire zone. It's a risk we faced in the 11th District as well, in Brentwood and Pacific Palisades. And it's a risk that the community has worked with the city and Pacific Palisades to take steps to address. LAPD has done more patrols, and signage has been installed. A community group, Pacific Palisades Task Force on Homelessness, actually formed, raised money, and hired OPCC, which is now the People Concern, and hired outreach workers, and have actually moved people from encampments into housing. And we, I just want to caution, and I'm not at all suggesting Mr. Coretz or his motion is doing this, but I've heard some noise on social media. I want to caution that this not be an opportunity to demonize or attack or scapegoat people who are homeless. This is a housing problem and a homeless problem, and the new normal is not just the fact that we live in an area with permanent high fire risk. The new normal is we live in a city now with encampments on our sidewalks and in our parks and in our canyons and under our bridges. And this should be a warning to us that we need to do more to make sure that people are housed and that we have LSA doing more aggressive and targeted outreach into hidden places in the canyons and in the mountains, and make sure that we're doing everything to get people housed. We absolutely have to have zero tolerance for fires there, but I want to make sure that we address this the same way we would the fire that was in Mountain Gate a couple months ago, which was started by a spark from a gardener using a weed whacker. And we need to look at the problems with weed whackers and the equipment people use and what the safeguards are for that. We need to make sure that people aren't smoking when they go hiking. We've taken steps to address that, but we need to make sure that this looks at every aspect of causes of brush fires and use LSA as a tool for that and our agencies and our social service providers, but not make it just about this particular cause here. So I support the motion, and just want to caution against demonizing in the social media realm.
Okay, and before I call on Mr. Harris Dawson, I... Miss, you're interrupting. You are interrupting this meeting. You are... Sergeants?
And she's...
She should be... Leah, we're going to remove you. And you are, again, you are disrupting the meeting. And I want to say this before I call on Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Spindler, the computers are not a toy. I indicated that you did not get in to speak on enough time, and I just want the city attorney to know that he's up there putting in names of people that are not even here. So you will not be allowed to speak on this item. It was posted for quite a while, yet, you know, it is posted for quite a while. Mr. Spindler, you're a violation. You're disrupting this meeting again. Sergeants, remove him as well. Remove him. No, you cannot... These computers are not a toy. Not a toy. You are disrupting this meeting, Mr. Spindler, and he's continuing to disrupt this meeting. He is continuing to disrupt this meeting. Please leave, Mr. Spindler. Please, no, you're going to leave right now. You're going to leave right now. If he continues, he is continue to, continuing to disrupt this meeting. Yes, Miss, and he can take Leah with him. Okay, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Coretz, for your... Yes, sir.
Mr. Spindler is shouting as he leaves the room. It's really making it impossible for the council member to talk properly, and he's disrupting the meeting. We can still hear him. Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just want to rise to thank Mr. Coretz and Mr. Bonner for putting this motion forward. I wanted to declare on the record that your Chair of Homelessness and Poverty is in complete support of this motion. I get very concerned that encampments are a new normal for us, and so there has to be a public safety assessment of encampments. So there are encampments that have, that present differing levels of public safety risk. Certainly, people in a high-fire area starting fires is a higher risk. Frankly, there are other things that I worry about that I would hope that the Fire Department has a way of communicating with us on. All these freeway off-ramps that people are doing 70 miles an hour coming off the freeway, and there are people there, sometimes they have children with them. I think, again, some are more dangerous than others. This motion points that out. I think we've got to be really, really vigilant on that while we're in the process of solving homelessness, because these things are going to be with us, and we cannot have a situation where we endanger everybody because we're looking the other way on a tough social problem.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this. Mr. Clerk, do you need to give us an instruction? Mister, the only card that was on file at the appropriate time was somebody put in a card for Mr. Walsh. You weren't, Mr. Previn. So let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. I'm not going to debate you... No, Mr. Previn, Sergeants, I'm not going to debate him. Okay, where, Mr. Clerk, where are we now?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted, they are referred.
The desk is clear.
All right, or any announcements? All rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Albona?
One announcement, the Transportation Committee meeting, which was scheduled to begin 15 minutes ago at 1:00, will meet at 2:15? Good? 2:15.
Okay, any other announcements? Now let's go to adjourning motions. I'm looking to my right. I don't see any to my right. I'm looking to my left. I don't see any adjourning motions to my left. Wishing everybody a happy holidays. This meeting is adjourned. See everybody in 2018.
For U.S. Customs and Border Protection, every day is 9/11. As a Port Director for U.S. Customs and Border Protection, my number-one role is preventing implements of terror and terrorists from entering the United States while facilitating legitimate trade and travel. I'm responsible for Los Angeles Seaport, Long Beach Seaport, and also Port Huaynimi. U.S. Customs and Border Protection is the first line of defense. We are responsible for enforcing over hundreds of laws for 40 different agencies, such as the Drug Enforcement Agency, Consumer Product Safety Commission, and U.S. Department of Agriculture. 100% of all arriving cargo is screened with our automated targeting systems. I have an anti-terrorism unit and an agriculture team that boards each vessel. They examine not only the cargo, but also the crew. Non-intrusive inspection technology allows officers to look inside a container without having to expose themselves to high-risk shipments. We use the centralized exam stations, and that's 220,000 square feet for the Anti-Terrorism Contraband Enforcement Team warehouse, for officers to conduct more intensive examinations. U.S. Customs and Border Protection processes over 3,500 vessels annually and over a million passengers and crews annually. I wake up every day understanding that my role here in the Los Angeles Long Beach Seaport not only impacts national programs, but also human beings such as my family. My family is very important to me. Me and my daughter both are movie fanatics, so we like to go to movies, we love to travel. Motivation is key. I'm passionate about what we do. It's a balancing act of economic prosperity for all of us, but also national security so you and I and our families can sleep at night.
Well, in internet class, we recently visited at the West LA branch.
We've got lots of people coming in saying, "I'm afraid of the computer. I've never touched a computer. I really want help. I feel very intimidated by it." I have a basic philosophy where I said that nobody here... I have a basic philosophy where I said that nobody here is dumb, the only thing dumb here is the computer. And I used that in my opening line in the class.
How long do you think it takes a person who hasn't used a computer before to learn how to email someone, for example?
Well, we can show them the basics in an hour and a half, which is about the length of the class that we just did. Some people I find pick it up in a day, they come back a few days later, and they say, "Hey, I got it." And that's kind of exciting for us to hear, feeling like we made a difference for somebody. Classes are completely free, and we're...
Even if you come back more than one time?
Yeah, we have no restrictions on that.
You can come to have a class every single week, and it keeps being free?
I've had one person, I remember a few years ago, who came to the same class for about three years.
Really? And it was free every time?
Yes.
Well, that's a pretty good price.
Yes, that's a good deal.
How long you been taking this computer class?
It's the first time I've ever taken a computer class of any type.
And you think you learned a couple things?
Yeah, for old dinosaur, I'm really picking up something.
So you're going to use a computer mostly for emailing people, and also...
Mostly for writing.
For writing? What kind of writing do you do?
Fiction.
You write fiction? Well, computers are a great tool for that, huh?
Great tool for it.
Computers are one of the most exciting developments in human history. They constitute a giant leap forward in our ability to generate and share human knowledge. And at your library, you can be a part of it. The library is your high-speed connection to information and entertainment from the past, the present, and even the future. So check it out. Log on to www.lapl.org, or visit LA Central Library, or any one of the 71 library branches. They all have computers that you can use, and many have free wireless access that you can use with your own laptop. And if you would like to improve your computer skills, take a class. They're free, too, and they're a lot of fun. I'd like to thank Andrew Tarr, City Librarian Fontaine Holmes, and some of the great members of the LA Public Library's technology team, including Stephen Newcomer, Giovanna Monino, Matthew Mattson, and James Van Gerpen, for showing us some of the inner workings of the library's technical side. Thank you for joining us here at your library. I'm your host, Franklin Delano Neely. See you next time.
Come on, George!
Hi, I'm Jen Mahoney in Studio City. You're watching LA City View Channel 35, where you can get the best in culture and arts. It's our city, it's our channel.
Hey, just go!
Welcome to Metro Motion, where we have a lot to celebrate. Two new rail line openings, three others in construction, hundreds of new buses, and many freeway bike and pedestrian improvements. We've made a lot of progress together, but there's still a lot more to do. LA County is in the midst of a transportation renaissance, as we plan for future growth. 2.3 million people expected to move into LA County in the next 40 years. That's a lot of people. Hi, I'm Paulette Tenilles, Chief Communications Officer at Metro, and we're working hard to expand our transportation system for us, our kids, and our grandkids. Here at Union Station, where I'm standing now, is just one great example of that. Metro purchased Union Station to be the transit hub for the region, and already thousands of people pass through here each day, going to work, school, doctor's appointments, and special events. But we want to expand our system even more, to provide easy, convenient connections, ease traffic, and improve local streets. We're on the cusp of being the transportation capital of the world. We're all in it together, so how are we going to make that happen? Angelenos are stuck in traffic an average of 81 hours a year. That's an awful lot of sitting in traffic. So Metro has a bold plan. We've been working with our partners all across the region on the transit and freeway improvements that are a priority for our county. But it also includes improvements in your local community. Things like better streets, repairing potholes, better signalization, and bike and pedestrian pathways. We've come a long way, but we still have a lot more to do, and it's going to happen through our continued local investment together. So what does this mean to you and me? Well, our new half-cent sales tax will be about $25 per year per person. That's much less than if you buy a cup of coffee or a fast-food meal, but that local investment will also help keep fares affordable for seniors, the disabled, and students, and keep our system in good working order after it's built. So why now? Well, because we have to start planning today for tomorrow, and the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be. We're on the Gold Line platform at Union Station, and just a couple of months ago, a few miles up the road, we were joined by thousands of people as we celebrated the opening of our Gold Line extension from Pasadena to Azusa. The trains are packed, and already it's providing a much easier and more convenient travel for thousands of our commuters. For more on this story, we turn to Megan Stecker.
It's opening day for the Metro Gold Line extension that's going to provide a great new transportation option for the people of the San Gabriel Valley, and for all of LA County. With this 11-and-a-half-mile extension, the Gold Line now reaches 31 miles and has 27 stations.
So today, Arcadia, Monrovia, Duarte, Urbandale, and Azusa join Metro's Transit Revolution. That's what we're here to do.
While other regions questioned whether they would want rail, we always knew the Gold Line would be right for us, and that it was important. And that's what we have before us today. We have the opportunity for this next leg of the Gold Line. Now, the question I want to ask you is, are we going to stop in Azusa?
No!
Are we going to go at least to Claremont?
Yeah!
Are we going to go to Ontario? A great network and a great rail system is vital to our county.
Because this isn't just about providing people from the San Gabriel Valley to come into other parts of the county, we want to come here and visit our friends here, too. We want to come in here, we want to use Ontario as an airport, not just LAX. We want to see a vibrant region that eases congestion for everybody.
Today is such an important day. We are ready to deliver and run trains for the next 50 to 100 years, right here in St. Gabriel Valley.
So we give big, big props to the San Gabriel Valley, to all who pushed for the Gold Line for their extension, and we look to the next phase.
One, two, three!
Residents came out to enjoy opening-day festivities at the stations along the extension, and take advantage of today's free rides. While riders may not know the numbers, they understand that this new service will impact their lives in a positive way.
So are you going to be taking the train every day for work?
Well, that's my plan. So the combination of this, plus the extension of the Expo line, all the way out to Santa Monica, is going to be perfect.
How much time do you think it might save you on your commute?
Probably around 20 minutes each direction, so 40 minutes a day.
Amazing. What are you going to do with all that extra time?
I'm going to probably spend it with these guys. Yeah, spend some extra time with my kids.
The Gold Line extension is part of Metro's plan to create a transportation revolution here in LA County.
So up to now, each of these opening of the lines has been an extension from one place to another. Now with the Gold Line and the Expo extension, we're going to have a real system that serves all of Los Angeles. You'll be able to get to downtown, to UCLA, to the airport, to the beach, to the San Gabriel Valley, to the San Fernando Valley, to Long Beach. You'll be able to get almost anywhere, and with all the other choices that are being opened up by Big Blue Bus, and by Metro, and by other forms of getting around, from bikes to pedestrians, we're going to have a real mobility revolution in LA.
With its extension to Azusa, the Gold Line now officially becomes the longest rail line in LA County. Metro is good at getting us to work, but did you know it's great at getting us to all the fun? 2,200 buses, over 100 miles of rail, bike and pedestrian programs. It's getting easier than ever to get from one end of LA County to the other. Let's see a couple of ways to play that the new Gold Line extension is offering. Justin Walter and I will tell you how, and we'll learn about one of LA's founders, a man from the past named Lucky Baldwin. Find out why he was so lucky.
Joining us now is Sandy Snyder, who is the former curator for the LA County Arboretum and Botanic Garden, and a current volunteer. So thank you for joining us.
You're welcome.
Now, today we're talking all about Lucky Baldwin and his significance here at the LA County Arboretum and Botanic Garden. So first off, where are we standing with this beautiful building behind us?
We are standing at the Queen Anne Cottage, Lucky Baldwin's guesthouse. It was built in 1885, and it's fabulous.
So did he own the entire land that the arboretum is currently located on?
Absolutely. The arboretum is 127 acres. Baldwin, the extent of his holdings in the San Gabriel Valley ended up at 50,000 acres. So what we are is the home site and what's left of all of that land.
Like many who settled in Southern California, Elias Jackson Baldwin was an American original by the way of the Wild West. Not only did he make a large amount of fortunes, he also made a big impact in the Los Angeles County area, because he owned a lot of land in the San Gabriel Valley, lived a life full of adventure, and married often. In 1828, Lucky Baldwin came west at the height of the California Gold Rush, looking for adventure and riches. He found both, first in San Francisco, then in the San Gabriel Valley. All you need to do to learn more about Lucky Baldwin and his impact on Los Angeles County is to hop on Metro and take it across the county to the new Metro Gold Line Arcadia Station. From there, you can take a shuttle to this beautiful location, the Los Angeles County Arboretum and Botanic Garden. Joining us now is Dale Carter, who is a volunteer at the arboretum, and we are standing in the middle of the arboretum, which is completely gorgeous.
It's a beautiful day today, isn't it?
Isn't this a great place to volunteer?
Yes. Many people come here because they're interested in all the plants. Most of the plants are all labeled, they can learn about them, they can see how they grow in this particular environment.
So you mentioned a depot, there's a depot here.
Yes, the Santa Anita Depot, Lucky Baldwin's depot, well, it wasn't his, it was a Santa Fe depot, but it was located here on the ranch, and when they built the freeway, it was moved over here to the arboretum, and it's a great place to go and visit.
So can we go check it out?
Let's go do it.
Let's do it. All right, Dale, we've made it to the southeast corner of the arboretum, along Baldwin Avenue, and this is where the Santa Anita Depot is.
That's where it has been relocated from its original location, up where the 210 freeway is today.
It's a big structure to move.
Well, it is a big structure to move, but not when it's brick by brick.
Brick by brick.
They had to take it apart and put it back together like a Lego set.
Well, there's so much history here with Lucky Baldwin, the arboretum, the rail system, so thank you for sharing us all about the experience here.
You're certainly welcome.
So that's Lucky Baldwin here at the gorgeous Los Angeles County Arboretum and Botanic Garden, which is a great place to visit off Metro Gold Line. But there is also a connection to Lucky Baldwin at the Santa Anita Race Track, which is just a short shuttle ride away from Metro Gold Line. So here's Megan to tell us all about it.
Most people think of Santa Anita Race Track as a great place to spend the day, but did you know it's also an important part of LA's history? Here's how.
Megan, welcome to Santa Anita Park. We call it the great race place.
Thank you so much. It's such a beautiful place, my first time here. Can you tell me a little bit about the history of the racetrack?
Sure. This actually is the second racetrack, Santa Anita Race Track. The first was started by Lucky Baldwin when he bought into Rancho Santa Anita. He actually bought 63,000 acres here, what we call Rancho Santa Anita, which encompasses East Pasadena, Arcadia, Sierra Madre, Monrovia, Baldwin Park.
So he was into gold. Let's talk Gold Line. So I took the Gold Line to get here, escape the traffic. Are you guys expecting that you're going to be able to capitalize off of the new Gold Line?
We're very excited about it, Megan. We have been waiting for this. We originally actually were involved with the design of the Gold Line station in Arcadia. Some of the freeze art that's on the side of the building has been incorporated into the station. We're seeing on weekends, we're getting a young crowd, dressed up, ready to go to the races, having fun. We think the Gold Line's really going to bring a lot of new people to the track.
So you mentioned there is shuttle service to the racetrack? And how often and when does that run?
Well, every race day, so every Thursday through Sunday, we'll operate our own shuttle, called the Santa Anita Shuttle, from 10:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night. So that's plenty of time before the first race, and plenty of time after the last race. In addition to that, the city of Arcadia has their own shuttle, and Arcadia Transit buses come from the Gold Line station. Every day of the week, they're going to run a loop. So you not only see Santa Anita, but you can see other great spots in Arcadia.
They call this the Yankee Stadium of racetracks, so take the Gold Line down and find out why. A few days after the Gold Line opened, a group of middle-school students and their teacher took advantage of the new line and a special student metro safety program to take a field trip to college. Justin Walter has the story.
We're here in Monrovia, waiting for students from Santa Fe Middle School to take the brand-new Metro Gold Line extension to the APU Citrus Station in Azusa for college visits. Now, the ride is completely free for the class, as part of a special program developed by Metro to help schools take kids on field trips. Now, for these students who are part of the Avid program to encourage kids to work towards college, this could be the first time they're having a vision of getting a college education. Now, for some of them, they could be some of the first in their families to do so. Joining us now is Jackie Martinez, who is the Senior Community Relations Officer for Metro, so thank you for joining us.
No problem.
So tell us more about the programs Metro is doing with schools and Metro.
So we do have a couple of great programs, actually, that we work with a lot of schools that are within a 1.5-mile radius of our train lines. It's through transit safety programs. We go out to the schools, we conduct safety presentations in regards to how to use a train, how to use a bus, how to live around Metro. Once they've been presented to, they actually qualify to come out with us on a rail safety orientation tour. We'll provide them with free passes to use the system, so they get a hands-on experience how to use the train.
We're on the train right now, headed to the APU Citrus Station in Azusa. Here are our students from Santa Fe Middle School. Are you guys excited for today?
Yeah!
So Natalie, where are you guys headed?
We're heading to three colleges, and we're heading to Azusa Pacific.
Azusa Pacific, so you guys are taking a field trip to go visit colleges, right?
Yeah.
Right? So are you excited to go see a college?
Yeah.
Have you visited a college before?
No.
So are you excited to see what it's like to be on a college campus?
Uh, yeah.
So Ms. Hardwick, tell us what the Avid program does for the students.
So Avid is a nationwide, actually an international program, designed to help students guide themselves into and through education and their careers and college.
Taking the class in the students via Metro to the college, what's it like using Metro to do that?
Well, that was my whole purpose and design, because we are right across the street from the train, so it brings an awareness, and it also helps understand how easy and useful public transportation is.
What are you most excited about for today?
To see mostly the colleges, because maybe in the future, I might end up in one of these colleges, and it'll tell me what classes I could take to get into these, or what programs I could have in order to be in it.
So what would it mean for you to be the first person in your family to go to college?
Well, I would be very proud of myself, first of all, and second, it'll be really meaningful for my parents to see me be successful in life.
Are you guys excited to check out Citrus College today?
Yeah!
Hey, thank you, Metro! So there we have it. Today is just another example of how the Metro Gold Line extension is helping LA County by helping students envision a future with a college education. For those taking... For those taking the new Expo line here to Santa Monica, well, you've got a lot to explore. Now, reporter Mike Ryan is always in search of new things to do with our bikes in Metro. So let's check out what he's been up to off the new Gold Line extension and the Expo line here in Santa Monica.
Nice day for a ride up here on the San Gabriel River Trail, which is not too far from the Gold Line extension. We're going to be taking that down to Santa Monica thanks to the newly opened Expo line extension. And we're going to be figuring out what's good up here in the foothills, all the way down to the beach on two wheels, all thanks to Metro.
We're very excited for the Gold Line here because we do a lot of rides in these communities, and it really helps to bring people together. So there's a lot of people using the mountains here to recreate, to play, hike, bike, explore. And we actually have a few trails in the San Gabriel Valley that can take you to these mountains. One of them is the San Gabriel River Trail that can actually take you from the mountains all the way out to Long Beach. That stretch in Duarte, right off of the Duarte Gold Line Station, as well as the Irwindale and Azusa Gold Line Stations. And it's just a short ride, about 10 minutes from either of those stations to get to the trail, where you'll see a lot of wildflowers right now and a lot of birds, wildlife, and a lot of bicyclists and runners on the weekends. So it's definitely a place that you should check out. Yeah, so on June 26, we're having a huge Open Streets event. So if you've ever been to Beach Streets in Long Beach or Ciclavia in downtown L.A., we're doing an Open Streets here in the San Gabriel Valley. It's going to be 17-plus miles long. It's going to be seven cities. And it's going to be along the Gold Line, so you can start at any point, no registration required, and come and check out our communities. We have a lot of wonderful businesses. We're a very diverse region. And you can ride, your bike, skate, walk, run, or even scoot. So come on down.
To head to the west side, you need to take the Gold Line down to Union Station, hop on the red line, connect with the Expo line, all the way to Santa Monica.
All right, well, we made it to Santa Monica, and there's so much to see and do. But if you don't have a bike, no problem. There's a program here in town that's got you covered.
So Freeze Bike Share is just another option for people to use to get around town. So we envision that there's a train right here, a train stop. So people take the train into Santa Monica, and when they get here, they need to connect that, you know, last mile or two. And it's a lot easier to do it on a bike than it is to walk. Freeze Bike Share exists citywide. We have about 75 locations installed at this point, and there's 500 bikes. People always ask me, how do they get going? How do they get started? And the easiest thing to do is to, you know, download the Social Bicycles app that is part of the system. And once you have the app and you register for it, then you get an account, you set up a PIN, and once you've done that, you're ready to get rolling. So we're here at the 17th and Colorado Avenue Station, and we're just a short distance away from one of our favorite stops, DK's Donuts.
DK's is a serious one-stop shop for foodies. We have sprinkled donuts, glazed donuts, chocolate donuts.
My favorite is Poe's Peanut Butter Puff.
My favorite donut is Apple Fritters.
My favorite donut is the donuts that I get to stuff with ice cream.
I'm a DJ. So my favorite donut at DK's Donuts is the Maple Bacon Bar because it is a sample of maple and a sample of bacon. And when you mix them together, it's just like a sweet sound that gets the whole crowd pumped up. And, you know, when you eat it, it's like...
Well, from donuts to the beach, thanks to Metro, they've got you covered here in Santa Monica. As for what the locals think, let's go to Justin Walter.
With the opening of the new Metro Expo line extension from downtown Los Angeles to Santa Monica, Metro riders can easily travel from L.A.'s skyscrapers to the beach. Now, I'm here in Santa Monica to talk to locals to give you inspiration for your next trip to Santa Monica using the Expo line extension. So what is an unexpected place that new Expo line riders to Santa Monica should visit?
Well, if you are lucky enough to be in Santa Monica on a Wednesday or a Saturday, you can walk to three of our farmer's markets from the Expo line. We have one farmer's market near the Bergamot Station, and we have two farmer's markets in downtown Santa Monica, one on Wednesday where we are today, and then one on Saturday, located on Arizona Avenue at the Third Street Promenade, three blocks from the Metro stop.
So the new Expo line makes getting here a lot easier for people that don't live in Santa Monica.
You don't have to hassle with parking. You just bring a couple of extra bags, come to the market, spend the whole day, and then go on home on the train and compare your purchases with everyone else who's just been to the market.
Great, thank you. Gina, tell me something good about the new Expo line.
I'm very excited that it's going to change my commute from Silver Lake. I work over here three times a week, and I'm excited to not drive.
What's an unexpected place that new Expo line riders to Santa Monica should visit?
I love going to Wasteland on Fourth Street, right next to here, like Fourth and Arizona. It's where I get most of my wardrobe, used and vintage clothing, the best stuff.
Well, I would say that if you're coming down here, a great thing is, especially if you like seafood, is a plate called the Blue Plate Oysterette, which is like an East Coast clam bar, and they have all kinds of great seafood.
Bergamot Station Art Center. It's a great art center. I think there's about 35 art galleries located over at Bergamot Station.
What are some of the galleries? Like, what type of art would people see?
There's roughly, like I said, 35 art galleries. There's about mostly contemporary art galleries, some photography art galleries, but there's also a cafe, some creative spaces, and some liver spaces here as well.
I love it right here. This is Palisades Park. It's beautiful at sunset. You can get perfect views of the sun setting over the mountain. They also have great workout classes during the day, and I sign up with them through ClassPass, and you can do yoga or cardio right out here under the blue skies. It's great.
And it's a free spot to just stroll and enjoy the ocean views.
Absolutely. And it doesn't get as crowded as some of the other areas of Santa Monica. So I really like coming here and just kind of taking in the outdoors.
Pam, tell me something good about the new Expo line.
Well, it's just fabulous that it's coming here to Santa Monica. And people from around Santa Monica, from around the west side, from downtown, from all over the region can come here to Santa Monica and explore it, especially where we are here today at Tongva Park.
Yeah, so what is an unexpected place that you recommend anyone using the new Expo line should visit?
Well, I think Tongva Park. It's about six acres, and it's been sculpted into rolling hills. It was flat initially. So there are four acres. There's the area called Gathering Hill, which is an open space area with an amphitheater where people can gather, events can take place. We have Observation Hill, which is in the west side of the park, where there are two, you walk up a bit, and there are two viewpoints where you can look and see the ocean, see the park, see the terrain around. There's also Garden Hill and Discovery Hill, and a children's play area, too.
I love it. So anyone who hasn't been to Tongva Park can easily now get here using Expo?
Absolutely.
How exciting is it for the Expo line to now be servicing Santa Monica for you guys?
It's a game changer, you know? This is an opportunity for people who might not otherwise come to visit, or an opportunity for people in Santa Monica to go to other parts of Los Angeles. And I think it brings the whole greater Los Angeles together.
Metro is transforming transportation, one ride at a time for now and the next 100 years. More trains, more buses, better freeways and local streets, more options, more jobs, more time for you. The future is now to move Metro forward. Thanks for joining us, and safe travels.
Hi, I'm Gil Reyes.
And I'm Rasha Goel. Welcome to another edition of Latitude, the latest in business and trade news from the Port of Los Angeles.
In this edition...
You'll find out why the latest state-of-the-art maritime vessel calling at the Port of L.A. is nicknamed the Hawaiian Hybrid.
Let's get started exploring this edition of Latitude.
The Port of Los Angeles has long been a focal point in maritime modernization. It's the first port in the world to plug a container vessel into shoreside power to reduce emissions at birth. The port is also home to the world's first hybrid electric tugboat. And now, the port is proud to harbor another maritime innovation. This time, a state-of-the-art vessel uniquely designed to meet the needs of shippers moving cargo to and from the Aloha State. Meet Peja Hawaii's Marjorie C. Known in the maritime industry as a conroe vessel, she can easily ship containers as well as large wheeled cargo, such as automobiles, trucks, and railroad cars. Vulgier items like helicopters and tanks can also be transported. This dual-purpose vessel is the only one of her kind running the route between the U.S. mainland and Hawaii, earning her the nickname the Hawaiian Hybrid. The Marjorie C has a container capacity of 1,400 and an automobile capacity of 1,200. Her oversized cargo deck has more than 100,000 square feet of space. Roll out the tape measure, and you'll find she's nearly 700 feet long and 100 feet wide, weighing in at 26,000 tons. Her stern ramp allows vehicles to be driven onboard directly from the terminal and then retracts and is stored on the vessel while she is underway. With two onboard cranes, she is self-sufficient and capable of loading and discharging cargo at facilities where shore cranes are not available.
Now, the Marjorie C is the only conroe vessel here in the port. The containers are loaded on the top deck with the cranes, and then the rolling stock, the cars, are using ramp on the backside of the vessel to get in and out. And there is also a possibility to load containers under deck.
The Marjorie C was commissioned and is now operated by an equally unique family-owned maritime company, Peja Hawaii LLC.
It's unique that a family-owned company invested about $200 million in ship and ventured into this market, and that says something for American enterpreniment.
She was built 100% on United States soil, which makes her a Jones Act vessel flying under the U.S. flag.
Jones Act service, so that means that an American company with an American-built ship and American crew can move cargo from one American port to another American port.
She was officially launched in Honolulu, Hawaii in August 2014 and is now in her first year of service. She is young, ingenious, resourceful, environmentally friendly, and quite beautiful, too. The Marjorie C is yet another example of the cutting-edge maritime technology shippers can resource at the Port of Los Angeles. The port is proud to be this Hawaiian Hybrid's mainland port of call. Aloha.
Hi, this is Caratello Family.
We are from Windsor, San Diego, Los Borja Heights.
You're watching Channel 35, our city, our channel.
You don't have to have green thumbs or a large garden to enjoy the rewards of growing your own plants. And even the smallest patio, balcony, or window box can boast a spectacular flower display or crop of vegetables and herbs. And you know, these days, there's such a wide variety of flowers and vegetables and planting containers that it can be really relatively simple to grow your own plants and save on that food budget. So please stay tuned to Aging in L.A. as we do a little gardening. Hashimoto Nursery is the oldest nursery in West Los Angeles and has been in the same family for 80 years. During World War II, nursery operations were disrupted when two of the four founding brothers were returned to Japan, and two were interned in Manzanar. But they were not to be deterred and continued operations at Sawtelle Boulevard at the end of the war. The experts here at Hashimoto Nursery are going to teach us how to put together wonderful floral displays like this and other gardening tips. With us is Jimmy. Thank you for being with us today. And how do we go about creating this beautiful, either centerpiece or flower arrangement for maybe a window?